Good afternoon. I am pleased to call to order the 2:00 PM session of our February 22nd Board of Supervisors meeting. We are glad everybody's here, a lot of great smiling faces out there. Must have a lot of great presentations and a lot of good stuff. We'll start like we always do with an invocation and then Mr. Sharp will lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand if you're able. Dear Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for entrusting this board to make decisions that represent your children in Goochland County. Lord, we ask, we thank you and ask you for a blessing on all our first responders and those that support protecting our county. Father, I invite you here today as we make decisions regarding our county budget. We know that all things come from you, so help us to be good stewards with the funds entrusted to us by our citizens. We thank you for all these things in your son's holy name. Amen. This is probably the most business part of our business sessions of the year, so we're going to get right into it and start off with new business with our presentation of our county proposed budget from our interim county administrator, Mr. Alvarez. Better be good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for allowing me to present to you our proposed 2023 budget. As you know, this is not a simple process. I believe it actually starts July 1 when we move into the new. Anytime something comes up that we don't have funded, we say, put it on next year's budget. So that's probably when it starts. But it is a, it is a long process, officially starts around October, and so today it's just kind of the culmination of a lot of work from a lot of departments. So for everyone's information, this budget and this presentation and the budget itself will be available at our website. And so today, we're going to go through the budget. My presentation takes you through budget process review, current economy, our recommendation, both operating and capital, a summary of strategic goals and funded priorities, future challenges and opportunity overview, and a summary of next steps in the budget process. As I mentioned, this process is a long, a long process. And I want to start by thanking everyone who participated. We could not do this without the constitutional officers, all the county departments, the agencies that support us, such as social services, health department, library. They all participated in this process. And we review all of our costs, their proposals, and from there we discern what we think is important to you, and so we move forward, and this is what you're seeing today. So we listen to citizens, and this happens all year long. As I said, the process started in early October. In November and December, we started meeting with all the departments, as I mentioned, all the constitutional officer departments, schools, contractor support services. We received and reviewed all of the contractor support services requests. We helped work sessions with schools, county departments, and constitutional officers on our, for our 25-year plan and our five-year plan. And then we met with you regularly on two-by-twos to discuss your priorities. So we take into consideration all the priorities that you've established in the past, so it's consistent with the board's strategic plan. We are, we continue to be conservative in our revenue projections and expenditure growth. We, wherever we can, we seek savings and opportunities for more efficient processes. And whenever we can, we expand our public safety service levels. That's been our approach for the last 10 years. And most of all, we meet or exceed all financial policy requirements. In our, in this budget, in budget, we propose to keep our employee compensation competitive with our neighbors, and there are some cases where we support expanded positions, and we continue to support self-sustaining rates for utilities. How are we, how are we doing as a county? Our economy is still doing great. Per our economic development folks, over the last five years, 424 million has been invested in commercial developments in the county. And our, according to the Employment Commission, we are at 2.2% unemployment, which is lower than the state average and almost two points lower than the national average. Interestingly enough, Goochland and New Kent County were only, the only two counties that over, that in 2020 didn't suffer job losses. We continue to gain, we didn't gain as much as we had, but we have, over the last 10 years, our job growth has increased by 45%, and 20, New Kent is next at 28%. Our jobs are also high-paying jobs. We're the highest in the region by a good amount. Richmond is next, I mean, yeah, Richmond is next, but we outnumber them by $20,000. So we create our jobs, the jobs created in Goochland are also higher than, than the area, than the region. Our median income is second only to New Kent, and it's over $100,000. I'm actually thinking I need to talk to New Kent to see what they're, what they're doing different, but I think one of our board members knows a little bit. And we are number 10 in the state, and when you look at the chart on the state, other than New Kent, all the other counties are very large, large counties. This year, we lost a little bit of pace with our target of, it's kind of an unspoken target of getting to 70, 37, 70% commercial and 30%, or 70% residential to 30% commercial. So we lost a little bit of space there, but our commercial is increasing rapidly, and I think you'll see in a future chart where that is. And part of that, it was just the amazing growth in residential applications last year. If you look at this chart and you look over at 2021, our commercial investments almost doubled, but you can see that our residential increased tremendously as well. If you look at that chart, the spike in 2017 was when Bristol Apartments and the Audi dealership came in, so that was kind of a little bit of an anomaly, and I hope we'll have a few more of those in the near future. This chart shows the, what I was talking about earlier. While residential continues to increase exponentially, if you look at the comparison with commercial, you can see that the trend for commercial is, is increasing as well. So while we're at 81% residential, commercial has steadily increased over the last 10 years. This next chart shows the reason for that trend. If you look at the building permits pulled, you'll see that we had a record year in 2021 of 3,568 permits. That was 670 or so more than 2020, which was a record year of 400 more than the prior year. So the, the building permits have continued to increase, as have commercial permits. That's a 200, 205 commercial permit increase from '20 to '21. It's just hard to keep up with the 600 in residential, but it's obviously looking really The median, median home value has increased by another $26,000, and that's in line with how, how they've increased in the region. But we're now, we're the highest in the region at $427,000 per, per home. Our real estate taxes are still the lowest in the region. I must tell you that this is based on 2021. For 2022, or 2022 rates, 2023 rates, the counties around us, Henrico and Chesterfield have proposed decreasing the tax rate, but still not coming anywhere near our 53 cents. So our budget takes into account keeping the, the tax rate at 53 cents and to continue to provide all our services at that rate. I think this is a, highlights our commitment to operating within our means and with the BOs, Fiscally Conservative Values. We are recommending a personal property rate decrease of 10 cents to 385. And we, we're proposing an increase in the aid for senior citizens and disabled of, from $900 tax break to $1,000, which equates to about a $200,000 home. The proposed all-funds revenue budget, as usual, our biggest source of funding comes from property taxes. State aid is about 13%. Those debt proceeds that you see at the bottom in the, oops, did I go backwards? Right there, the 9.7, that is the, that proceed from the recent bond issue for the fire station and about a million dollars to get us started with the courthouse building. The, if you are missing it, the elementary school proceeds were taken into account last Expenditures again, our biggest investment is in education, next is public safety and utilities, and that's been consistent with how we have managed our budget over the years. The general fund budget this year, our proposal calls for an increase of 12% or $8.6 million to a total of 74.2 million. The growth in our revenue is coming from new construction as well as the higher-than-normal real estate assessments, which were, which averaged about 11, 11.1%. The expenditures, once again, our biggest focus is education and public safety. Education takes up about 35% of our general fund and public safety about 26% of our general And this is, as I mentioned, the general fund budget increasing 8.6 million or 12% to 74.2 million. Am I going too fast for you guys? I'm trying to keep it quick, but. Capital Improvement Plan this year, for the 25 years, is now looking like $505 million, and that includes two more elementary schools, four fire stations, and the new courthouse, of course. So now, if we look at how we align with the strategic goals, one of the things that I mentioned was assistance to our citizens, so we're increasing the elderly and disabled tax relief from $900 to $1,000. We're proposing a decrease in personal property tax rate from 395 to 385. And as you know, we, early this year, we, we started for the first time, the fire and rescue citizens, volunteers receive a one-car personal property tax exemption. Continuing on strategic goal one, about more efficient, effective, and transparent government, we're in the process of implementing a new building inspection software system. We were supposed to go live earlier this year, but because of concerns with, from some of our customers who said that they have been through some horrible times with other localities, we decided to take a step back, make sure that all the interfaces to our finance systems work, and so we're taking a more conservative approach. Right now, our plan is to go live in May. This process streamlines the permitting process, allows for online applications and online portals for scheduling and making changes to applications. Strategic Goal Two, which is to maintain the county rural. One of our big investments in this is our land use taxation. There's $713 million in land value that we value at reduced rates, and that equates to about $3.7 million in revenue that we are reinvesting back in the rural community. Continuing on strategic goal two, capital investments over the next five years, the schools, we have the $38 million for the new elementary school, 29 and a half million for the courthouse, and another 5 million in facilities, 22.7 million in public safety, some improvements in information technology and parks and recreation. And we continue to support as part of our rural maintenance, we continue to support the VPI Extension Program in Monaca Soil and Water. I don't know if Jonathan is here. We continue to stay focused on our finances. As everybody here I'm sure knows, we are now the smallest locality with triple triple. But not only that, as we went to the market with our bond issue, the bonds were also issued AAA ratings by the three, three agencies, which is why we, we had such great feedback and I think it was 11 bidders on the bonds and 31 bids trying to buy our bond. So that's pretty impressive. And in keeping with our financial policies, we are staying within our policies for unassigned fund balance as well as assigned balance, and we are keeping our revenue stabilization at, I think it's 3% of our budget. And of course, we will revisit that once we have the final numbers to see if we need to add anything to those funds. But right now, our budget continues to support that target of 25% for, of the subsequent year's budget. Despite our ratio in the $50 million in bonds, if you look at this chart on 22, we show the increase in debt, but we are still two percentage points below our target and four percentage points below our policy of 12% debt ratio. And you can see as, as the debt, we start paying it off, you'll see the, that's when we will do further borrowing to complete our, the projects from the referendum. For public education, we've provided them a 4% funding increase of $1 million to their budget to bring them up to 25 and a half million from the general fund. And the, the school board approved the proposed budget by the superintendent yesterday, which included this million dollars. The total school budget increased, increased by 2.6 million, which is a 7% increase, that includes the CIP dollars. The long-term, the 25-year plan includes two new elementary schools, major renovations to the middle and high schools. So, and we've, as I mentioned earlier, we funded GES with a budget, with last year's budget. Again, strategic goal four, for public safety, the increase is about 19% from 2022, and there's 143 and a half million dollars in our 25-year plan. The sheriff will be back in a minute to give you his budget numbers and to talk about his organization. And then, so what we're doing in this budget is we, we're funding six full-time deputy positions, one full-time dispatcher for the ELC center, one part-time deputy position, and one part-time admin assistant, as well as several public safety vehicle replacements. Moving on to fire and rescue, and the chief will come up and present his numbers to you in a minute. We're increasing their budget 24.2% to 1.6 million, and that includes five full-time fire and EMS, one full-time fire marshal, it's converting it part-time to full-time, and one part-time emergency manager. This budget also includes the funding for the new West Creek Fire Station and land for the Company 2 Fire Station replacement, a ladder truck replacement, tanker replacement, emergency response SUV replacement, and a lot of turnout gear, and improvement to the fire training center, which we know we have to replace in a few years, but we're trying to do what we can to keep it, keep it going until then. In our CIP, there's 101 million dollars to support new fire trucks, tankers, ambulances and so on, and four new fire stations. Continuing on strategic goal four, animal protection, and Joe Green will be up to show you his plans. We, the only, the only new source we're adding is a shelter coordinator. And the, I'd like to say that I'm, I am so proud of the work we have done with the animal shelter. I think over the last six or seven months, the improvement has been tremendous. Job has been a great part of that, and it's just, it's just a nice place to just visit. Big change from our old shelter, but it's even a big change from seven months ago. Strategic Goal Five, a positive work environment. We, there's no increase this year in the employee share of healthcare cost. Currently in the budget, we have 3% merit, merit increase for employees plus some funding for marketing analysis that we're undertaking, a benchmark approach. We're still working on these numbers, so this will probably change before you approve the final numbers. We have some other things that we're looking at before we make a final decision. What we're including as far as personnel, and you'll hear from Jessica Rice, our HR director, in a minute too, but we're including 14 new full-time public safety positions, and that continues our goal to increase public safety, three part-time public safety positions, two full-time public utilities positions, and four full-time non-public safety positions. And again, if you look at this chart, you'll see that our focus for the last 10 or so years has been in growing public safety. If you look at the orange line on the chart, that's general government, and we have kept that very flat using efficiencies and other ways of keeping our staff working without adding a whole lot of headcount. This next chart is, is really telling because you can see the, the green is where we are all the way up to our proposed 2023 budget. The orange is where we would be if we kept up with inflation throughout the years. So some of the challenges, of course, future budgets may not be able to rely on the growth in assessments that we saw this past year. We don't know what inflation is going to do this temporary. Inflation seems to be longer than just temporary, so we'll see what that is. Funding for road improvements is always a challenge, and it's not going to get any easier. But maybe there might be some in the infrastructure bill. I don't know what that's going to do for us. Growing public safety needs, we know that with the loss of volunteers and the community, aging community, there's an increase in calls, and we're having to handle those. So I don't think you'll see a big decrease in the need for public safety officials in the near future. Public education funding is always a toss-up. We don't know what the, how the state is going to, to respond and how they're going to support us. We, we have implemented a program or we're proposing some changes to our assistance to residents in need, but that may increase going forward. And then we don't know, General Assembly legislation, what it'll do. We know there's some bills before the General Assembly that could reduce our funding ability for the future, so those are things that, that we don't know, we don't quite know the impact of those bills until the General Assembly closes. So today, as far as schedule, today you have me, then the sheriff, fire and rescue, animal protection, HR workforce, and then we'll ask you to authorize the tax rate, authorize advertising of the tax rate. On March 1st, we will look at revenue, debt policies, public utilities, Takahoe Creek Service District, and we'll have Dr. Rayly here to present the schools' operating budget. Then on March 8th, and in case you haven't noticed, this is every Tuesday for the next month and a half, March 8th, you have, we'll have judicial administration, general government, support services, community and economic development, human services, library, health department, general services, and parks, so that'll be a full, full afternoon. And then on March 15th, we'll have a county CIP work session. Further communication about the budget, on March 10th, we have our first Spring Town Hall, that'll be at Takahoe Pines at 6:30 PM. I encourage anybody here who hasn't been to Takahoe Pines to visit, especially those my age or older that might, might want to move in one day. It's, it's really a great place, and I think we're going to enjoy the auditorium, and I'm hoping we'll have a big crowd of citizens that don't, don't drive away a lot, maybe they'll come for some entertainment. On March 22nd, the town hall will be, that'll be, districts two and three will be at Central High School, and we have the work session on the 15th, the CIP work session, and then we'll have the District 1 Town Hall at Bird Elementary at 6:30. On April 5th, beginning at 6:00 PM, we will have the public hearings on the budget, so the tax rate public hearing, followed by the TCSD at Valorum Rate public hearing, followed by the Budget and Related Items public hearings, and then the budget adoption will take place on April 19th. Again, a summary, our economy remains strong. The budget continues to meet or exceed all financial policies. Public safety and education remain our priorities in this 2023 budget. We've made significant investments in the CIP, and they're included in this budget. We're not proposing a real estate tax or TCSD tax rate increase. And as I mentioned before, we're including 3% merit increase for county employees, but we're still looking at, at that to see if there's any, any changes we might want to make. With that, I conclude my presentation. I'd love to take questions from you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. A lot of work condensed into 20 minutes, so very, very well done. Board, any questions for Mr. Alvarez?
I've got it.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. You know, every year we, we've been doing this, it's, we just feel fortunate. We, I think these are good decisions that we have to make on balance, and like you said, your last slide, Goochland is strong, and, and for that, we can be very grateful. But there are, there's still, as you know, there's still a lot of decisions packed in all this, and I know we're going to hear specifics, so some of my questions, maybe you can just defer to a later speaker, and I'll try to stick to just a couple of high-level things. And we just, we just were handed this packet, you know, when we sat down here, so I haven't had a chance to dive in, but...
You haven't read it yet?
Yeah. I was paying attention to you, but page 41, revenue by sources, and I'm talking about the budget book here and funds some reason. This might be for Ms. Horlacher.
She can, she can help if I need it. I'll call a friend.
So, so on the bond issuance, I'm just, that's the last item on there. The FY 2022 adopted budget bond issuance is 40.8 million, and then proposed budget 9.7 million. We just did a 50 million dollar this year, so I, I was looking for 50 million in that budget.
The 40 was, if I'm not mistaken, was the schools, which was in last year's budget. So it was appropriated in last year's budget.
So the nine?
The nine is requested for the fire station and the start money, starting money for the new courthouse.
But we just did 50 million, so why does the nine?
Forty and nine is almost 50.
It's the total, I get the total, but why is it, why are they in two different fiscal years?
It's a good question. I wasn't here last year, so let me call a friend. I think it's just the way it worked out. We, you know, the schools have already started their process. We haven't started the process of the fire station yet, so, but I'll let Barbara...
I'm, I'm just trying to get, isn't this, is this a cash flow accounting thing? So I mean, that's why I'm just trying to get my head around if we did, we taking, receiving the money at the same time?
Right, so we decided to issue 50 million.
Come, come on up if you don't mind, just, there might be some more questions, and plus, I think this is being recorded.
So the 40 million had been already budgeted last year, and we decided to, because we wanted to maximize the low interest rates, we decided to go with the number 50. It wasn't budgeted last year because we didn't have the fire station in last year's CIP. We have it in this year's CIP, so it, it's, you know, it was just managing the cash, basically, and we didn't know until we issued the cash exactly how much we were going to issue.
Got you. Yes or, yes or no answer to this next one?
Okay.
Is the premium reflected anywhere in these, in this budget?
No, we have not budgeted the premium, yes, yet.
Slide 31 of, of the presentation talks about public education, 4% funding increase, up 1 million to 25.5 million. That, I think, is consistent, well, is it a catch-up a little bit from what we've done in the past?
Well, it was a little lower than it was last year. I believe last year was about 1.2 million.
So if I heard you correctly when you were on that slide, does that include CIP? Because, you know, like a later slide...
No, no, the CIP is a 2 point, if I can go...
Well, I see the two, CIP in the 25-year plan, because like in a later slide, like the fire rescue, you have 10.9 million in FY 23, 2023 CIP. Some of these other slides, you don't have CIP, or you just talk about a 25-year. I'm trying to get my head around CIP for 2023 for each of these categories. So schools, CIP for 2023.
I think there is one of the, where's your, let me see. I think one of these slides.
I think that, what was it? It shows the CIP.
There's one of them that shows all the numbers, though. Where is it? Not that one, I think it's the other direction. Oops. So the 25.5 is just for their operating budget.
Right.
There is, there. So that's the five-year CIP. Are you just talking about FY 23?
Well, well, it's, it's okay. I was just looking for something more than the 20, the 25-year.
That's right.
I'd latch on to that too much.
The five years is what we balance, so those are the different categories that add up to the five-year CIP.
So the public safety, that's sheriff and fire rescue combined, 2022?
Public safety, yes.
Okay.
And we'll have a whole work session on the CIP.
And the schools, 38 million, that's five-year balanced right now.
That's five-year balanced, yeah, and that's, the majority of that is the high school, middle school improvements. It's not only that, but a lot of it is.
Jumping around, and this one probably can just be handed off to Ms. Rice when she speaks, but I want to know if the benchmark study is going to include a review or any direction or suggestions on health, healthcare costs and healthcare sharing. Y'all need to answer that, but put that one in that, that's, that's one. Darn, I had a couple of more. If I can reserve my time, if somebody else has a question, I'll come back to it.
We'll, we'll put a pin in it for now.
Cut him off. Mr. Peterson?
This may be for Ms. Horlacher as well. One of the hallmarks of Goochland County, and one of the secret ingredients in our secret sauce here, is we can budget reasonably conservatively each year, and so that Moore's Law hasn't been repealed, and things don't go according to plan, and perfection never achieved, so our conservative budgeting provides at least the initial kind of shock absorber in the system, so we don't have to take some drastic action. Could you maybe share with the, the group the degree of conservatism and the growth in our two largest sources of revenue, which is the real estate taxes and the property taxes, personal property taxes? So are we, what are the assumed growth rates in this 23 budget, if you will?
So for the real estate tax, I'll talk about that first. We, we use the assessment, reassessment figures that we got, but remember, when we do FY 23, that's half a year of the current reassessment, following year is the next year's. So for next year's, even though this year's was, you know, 11 plus new growth, I think it was about 13%, next year's, we put 4%. So we also don't, we also use a collection factor in there, because you never collect 100% the first year. You, treasurer does a very good job and ends up collecting 100% over a course of a couple of years, but not the first year. So that's why we feel like that number is conservative. The same with personal property tax, we feel like that's a conservative number, because we just base it on the growth of what we currently have in terms, but we keep adding more vehicles, so we don't factor that in, so it, you know, we feel that it's a conservative number.
Okay, I mean, part of the reason for the question is trees don't grow to the sky. We've seen a, what I'll call an anomaly in the, the growth rate over the last year or so, driven by inflation, and we've seen the Federal Reserve and the administration now is targeting inflation to try and get that back under control. And as they raise interest rates, mortgage rates will go up, and we understand that over the cycle, you know, real estate values tend to fluctuate, and they don't always go up every year. And so that's, part of the question is, what are we assuming for the coming year anyway, which is about all we can see.
Right.
Year two, three, four is a little fuzzy. My crystal ball is kind of cloudy out 10 years, but the next year, we're assuming about 4%.
Right, we took it down.
Which is down from this year, but it's still a positive growth rate. And then on the vehicles, we've seen used car prices just go through the roof, and I, that, again, is unsustainable. I think once they start unloading all the ships and whatnot, that'll come back down to earth, so.
Yeah, we, we just budget for normal growth. We don't really budget, you know, we don't use like a 20% or 30% kind of crazy numbers we're hearing. We don't use those kind of factors for that.
Okay, good. That's the kind of overarching color I was looking for, is how conservative our budget, how you, how conservative you feel our budget is that you're presenting to us, so thank you.
Mr. Lumpkins?
He's trying to get away. I like, I like his, I like his question. He, he, every year I've been on the board, it's an emphasis on conservative, and I can see that, I appreciate that. He said, how conservative do you feel our budget is relative? Do you feel it's...
I think you always have to strike a balance. I mean, if you're too conservative, you, you know, you miss opportunities to, to, to do great things for the county, but I do think it's a conservative budget, because we basically follow the methodologies we've used in the past.
Well, speaking of methodology, and so philosophical question that I kind of, pointing it your way, but I'm looking to my colleagues on the board, the revenue stabilization reserve. So we have 3% of total annual adopted general fund budget. So when you're looking at the budget this year, there's a bucket in our funds, and there's a revenue stabilization fund. When you put this budget together, and I was looking at the numbers earlier, there is an increase in the operating general fund budget. Do you need to put money into that fund as part of the budget, or is that fund already have enough in it that it covers?
It has enough in currently, based on, you know...
So it has enough in currently to cover the increase that you're doing in the budget? So in other words, it's arguably overfunded currently?
No, it's current as of June 30th, 2021, so that, that's the current number. We will have to add more money.
That's, you're answering the question, you have to add some money.
I kind of mentioned that with both the, the revenue stabilization fund and our general fund balance.
So somewhere in the budget, we should see a line where we're increasing the funding in that bucket?
We, we, you won't see it being budgeted for. What we will do is, at the end of the year, when we end up with our fund balance, that if, whatever we can't, don't, aren't required to put in revenue stabilization and in unassigned, will be left for assigned. If we have a lot of surplus, we'll have more in that bucket. If we don't, we just won't be able to assign as much money. We won't have as much, you know, cash to, to fund future projects.
Okay, so there's another big bucket in my simple mind, and forgive, new or taxes minus expenses equals X.
Right.
And we have to have this revenues, but, but this, in other words, we don't have to pull from revenue minus expenses to fund that. There's already adequate funds that maybe are not yet assigned?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And, and that could change, depending on how fast your budget grows, but, but we don't foresee that happening yet, where we would have to budget to, to, I mean, at some point, you might have to budget to fill that, that, but I don't think we will, yet.
And here, now for, now for my philosophical piece on this revenue stabilization reserve, and I've talked about it before, we're, we're funding the non-local portion, 3% of the total annual budget, which for that year, plus the non-local portion of the school operating fund budget. Talk about conservative.
It's very conservative, yes. Most people would just go with, they wouldn't have, most localities wouldn't have that little extra portion in there of the non-local portion of the school's budget.
Because, because that assumes that it may just vanish. Yeah, I mean, right?
Right.
So I, I think, I think that's too conservative. My view is that's too conservative to have that whole entire non-local portion.
You and Mr. Peterson have that conversation.
We'll have to, we'll have to wrestle it, but...
I'll stay after class and talk to Mr. Peterson.
But, but I do, I do, well, yeah, I guess I'll have to wrestle Mr. Peterson on that one. But the, the non, well, let me ask this, then, the next part of it, because I read down where we may draw that down, and it shows when we can draw it down. If that money, if we put all the non-local, non-local portion of the school operating budget in that revenue stabilization reserve, I don't see in our summary of our policy here, that that portion is reserved for schools, if we ever have to tap into that. Is it reserved for schools, the portion that's in there for the non, non-local portion? Is it reserved by policy for us to use for schools, in the event we need to tap into the revenues that...
That's a good question, and by our policy, no, it's not. I mean...
Well, if we want to continue to be this conservative, I would suggest to my colleagues that if we're putting non-local portion of the school operating fund budget in this bucket, that we reserve pulling out of that bucket for the same purpose that we put it in. That's my, not looking for an answer, that's, that's the beginning of my argument with Mr. Peterson.
I can, I can tell by looking at Mr. Peterson, this will be an item on the next financial, financial committee to create the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm waiting for Mr. Peterson to retort, but I think he's gonna, he's gonna wave the, wave the white flag. For now, you and, you had this one. All right, any more questions for Mr. Alvarez? All right.
That's it, no questions.
All right.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Again, I, I want to thank everybody in the county that, that really helped put all these figures together, and especially, I don't know if Kathleen's here?
She's not, but she worked really hard.
She's not, but she was even here all weekend long, putting the book together that you just finished reading, Mr. Lumpkins, very fast. Okay? I'll go ahead and introduce the sheriff.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board.
Your mic, please, thanks.
One more time.
Good.
Yep.
All right, good afternoon, Chairman, Board. Thank you for giving me the time today to go over a little presentation about our budget, and also a little bit about what Goochland Sheriff's Office has been doing this past year, and a little bit of the year before. All right, just as a reminder, Goochland County Sheriff's Office is the primary law enforcement in Goochland County. State Police is our assist agency. We're responsible for responding to calls for service. We're responsible for the 911 communication center. All dispatchers are underneath the sheriff. We're also responsible for civil process, which is serving court papers such as subpoenas, writs, even evictions, emergency protective orders, any court paper at all, we go out and we serve them. We're also responsible for the court security. Everybody's in the court, whether it's the public or court staff. We're also responsible for prison, prisoner transport. And a lot of people don't realize, when it comes to prisoner transports, that we may be going to Bristol, Virginia for a transport. There's been times in court where we've had five different jails we had to respond to in one day to bring them to court. So if, if, if there's a prisoner in Fairfax County, a prisoner in Bristol, Virginia, a prisoner in Henrico, prisoner of Virginia Beach, we have to send a deputy, at least one, sometimes two, depends on what the crime is, to go there and provide transportation back here for court, and then the return trip. So that's a big manpower-intensive thing on some of our court days. Also, just a reminder, our daily operations runs on our, or is driven by our mission vision and values, which was adopted January of 2020, but we also have four main goals that also drive our work and fulfill in what our mission is. And those four are to maintain our safe community through delivering high-quality law enforcement services, and also having community partnerships. Also recruit, retain the best qualified personnel, deputies and dispatchers that are committed to Goochland County. Also preserve our fiscally responsible practices at the sheriff's office, and also innovate the use of current and emerging technologies in law enforcement, which is changing every day. All right, on to the budget this year, is the sheriff's main budget. As you can see, there is a increase there, and I'm going to dive in a little bit more on this one in a little bit. And also the court-related budget with a, with a slight increase there. Excuse me. So the biggest increase in our budget is always personnel. A couple of years ago, I presented a five-year plan in order to get appropriate staffing of deputies in the county of Goochland. Last year, y'all are, y'all are great, y'all helped us out tremendously, and I praise you for that, but y'all provided seven new deputy, full-time deputy positions for us, a, and a full-time dispatcher and part-time dispatcher, so thank you for that. This year, I'm asking for six additional deputies, a part-time community deputy, a dispatcher, and administrative assistant. Now, what that does with those positions, and I'm focusing right now on deputy positions, is earlier this year, we started a mandatory minimum staffing of four, four deputies, 24/7, which is not enough. If our five-year plan is adhered to, or if it, if it pans out, we will have at least six, if not seven, deputies on mandatory minimum by FY 2025, which is great, and that would actually put 10 deputies on shift. So when I say we have 10 deputies on shift, we also think about training... So when I say we have 10 deputies on shift, we also think about training, them being off for training, sick leave, court, vacation, their own family time for their well-being, and many other things that keep, keep them out of work, doing presentations, doing so much different things. So what would we, what would we do with the additional deputies? Well, and the map you see there is Gutcheon County is, is our, sort of like the fire department, they have the six stations, where we have six sectors, is what we call them. Our goal is to have a deputy in each sector 24/7 to answer calls, to improve response time, and to be there when, when our citizens need them. So that's six. So if we would have the seven, the seventh one would be a supervisor, rove, or rove into the county, so they can go to a call if need be, if someone requests a supervisor. For some reason, if no one's sick, no one's on vacation, nobody's in training, we will have 10. And what we would do with 10 on the road at one time? All of those would be full. We would have a corporal monitoring the central east sector, sector, which is courthouse all the way to the county line, then maybe a sergeant from the courthouse to the fluviana line. So if someone asks for a supervisor, they're even there quicker. And then we would have those other two deputies in hotspots throughout the county. If there's a big event like Razzwick, we would have them there. Or if the hotspots of, Drive Shack is a hotspot right now, we would have them there. But that's what we would do with the, with the 10 people. All right, a little bit of what deputies are doing. This is the calls for service, all of our calls for service. We increased about 1,500 this year. I am predicting that we're probably going to be around 26,000 this year. That's what my guess is going to be. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna really increase this year. And on the topic of calls for service, one of the calls for service that really takes up time is mental health emergencies. It has been an issue for many years, and as you can see, our increase for our mental health calls was 171 this year. And then we had 361 welfare checks. And in the welfare checks, it could be just going over to someone's house, making sure they're okay. But a lot of times, it is, ends up being a mental emergency, or some kind of mental problem. So a lot of these mental health emergencies end up going into what we call an ECO, emergency custody order, or a TDO, which is a temporary detention order. Well, our deputies, and this is something that the VSA has been on, and it's been down in the General Assembly, is working on, but our deputies have been down in hospitals, at least one deputy, a lot of times two, sometimes three, and they're coming off the road to be at a hospital until they can find a bed. And this is for three, four days out of 24 hours a day. So that is very, you know, that's very, a very big problem, and hopefully they will fix something in the General Assembly, but I'm not holding my breath. Also, what we've been doing, which is a great thing, is training. Last year, we, we did over 4,000 hours in training, 4,117 to be exact. And I just want to point out a couple of things in this slide is, is over 51%, we're going outside our agency to go to training. We're going to, down in Tiewater area, we're going to Lynchburg, we're going to Maryland, we're going, if a deputy is going to Florida in March for a accident reconstruction class. So he's gonna be down there two weeks. So we are, we are really training, I truly believe in it. But also wanted to point out the in-house training, which is over 13%. And I can tell you, years ago, you would never seen 13% in-house training at our office. And I will say, the firearms is in-house too, but the 13.6% is bringing people in, and also using our instructors that are in-house, we got several instructors behind us who come in and teach classes. But we are bringing outside instructors in, we are, we are bringing a lot to Gutcheon County. We're having several chief sheriffs from all over the state, all over the nation. There's a sheriff from Louisiana coming up for a training later on this year to Gutcheon. So why do we train? Because our citizens expect the best, and they deserve the best. They deserve the best highly-trained deputies and dispatchers that we can provide. As sheriff, I, I am personally a lifelong learner, and I believe that in training, our deputies and dispatchers, training them as much as we can to the level though, where we can get, and which is the highest it can be, is a matter of life and death for citizens and employees of the sheriff's office, the deputies who are out there, and the firefighters who are out there every day. And also, the normal requirements, some of the training requirements through our accreditation and DCJS. All right, a little bit of explanation and increase in the budget. One personnel, we already talked a little bit about that, but I did want to highlight, in early January, we were down 15 deputies because of COVID. We, I mean, out 15, which means we're operating on a skeleton crew. So with the additional deputies, it helps us have a little bit more of a bench, that if this would happen again, I can't believe I'm talking about COVID, you know, whereas almost on year three, but we are, and we were down 15. So, you know, the, if we had these other six new positions, it'll definitely help out maintaining the roads. Also, the normal repair and replacement of vehicles, you know, equipment. We're also planning on purchasing a forensic computer, which we have one, but it is out of date and is basically full. Not quite yet, but it will be by July 1. And we plan on getting that so we can properly investigate some of these internet crimes that we have in our county and in the nation, unfortunately. And then the training again, and then the, we also, as we all know, preaching to the choir on this, about the fuel costs going up. And then the overtime, we have a substantial amount of overtime in there, or an increase for overtime, and that is so we can keep people on the road during, you know, 15 people out. Also, when people go to training, they burn a day, the way it is right now. So if they're in training Monday, and they're supposed to be on the road Tuesday, they're off Tuesday. So with this extra overtime, we can keep deputies on the road. Also, I know a lot of people are happy about this, including the schools, but we have a new line item for just overtime for government events. So what we're doing now is we are budgeting for deputies to work 4th of July, to work Fall Festival, to work the high school football games, basketball games. There's no more of this back and forth billing, the sheriff's office billing the county and the schools, and back and forth. We're just doing it all, it all comes pretty much out of the same pot. So that's going to save a lot of time and money for everybody, for the schools, to county administration, and the sheriff's office. And then the final one, just wanted to touch on, is addition of more dash cams and cage cams. We don't have them in right now, but we have four on the way. They're actually building the cars right now with them in it, and we want to add more cameras to it, because the cameras, I'm definitely a proponent for it. I think it, you know, when you're wearing your body camera, you get this view, but if you have that, also that dash cam, you get much of a better view with a body camera and then a cage cam. And these things, one, one lawsuit that these prove that someone's not telling the truth is paying for itself, without a doubt. All right, moving into dispatch or emergency communications, it's a slight increase there. What the dispatchers doing, I just want to point out, 2018, those are the number of phone calls, 911s, non-emergency calls, they had into dispatch. It's already up to over 38,000 now. That's approximately, doing it in my head, about 4.25 calls per hour. That's not counting the calls that they have to make out of dispatch, where they have to call for MedFlight, they have to call for other jurisdictions from each way, they have to call for things for the fire department, for the sheriff's office, or call for courts that are transported. So that is, that is a, just a small bit, a small snapshot of what dispatch really does in there. All right, so the explanation of increase for dispatch, right around the same time, you would know it, dispatch, five dispatchers down, you know, with COVID. So once again, skeleton crew and dispatch. So we need that extra position, and I will tell you that I'm going to revisit the five-year plan on possibly adding more dispatchers a little sooner than what I have on there now, because of that reason, because we were down where we have two dispatchers. I dusted off my headset and started going through, trying to relearn how to dispatch and everything, but, but that was no joke, I was going to be in there dispatching, along with a couple of other deputies who are cross-trained to dispatch. I think Chief Deputy East was actually dusting off his, but we were, we were going to go in there, because we have to do it. So you probably will see that in the next couple of years, on, in the next budget presentation. On the operation side, we have, actually have our communication supervisor in the back room, Ms. Witt, but we want to, you know, send her to some added training on leadership and supervisory skills, and also in the future, we plan on having a couple of shift leads that are going to be a supervisory role, and we want to get them trained up before those positions become available. And then the normal equipment that we have to replace, they're in there 24/7, and when you're sitting in chairs and on desk for 24/7, you know, 24/7, things break, you know, things get wore out, and they just need replaced. And then also our language line and other services that they use constantly. All right, a little bit on the corrections and detention, this is just a, this is a, a forecast on what we're going to spend for adult and juvenile space. But also what, the name of this is actually a little misleading for correction detention, but it also, in this line, also has the academy fees, which has actually gone up just over And then our grants, where we have a couple of grant writers in our agency, we have three real good ones. And this is one of our, or a couple of our grants where we get radars, PBTs, breathalyzers, and we give money for actually DUI enforcement, and also speed and reckless driving enforcement, which also helps keep people on the road, extra people on the road too. And we're also hoping to, as long as some of these go forth through the legislation, applying for a couple of other grants, it'll help out with a couple of positions in the future. And then on to the CIP, just hitting on the FY 23, those are to replace eight vehicles. And as the CIP goes up, we increased it 5%. We talked to our guys down at Sheehy and the East Coast Rep, and that was his suggestion on, on going up with it. He was sort of, he said it's, it's a flip a coin right now, is, is what he, is what he said. All right. Thanks to the citizens of Gutcheon County, and to this board, and to all the deputies and men and women in the sheriff's office. We thank you, because we're able to do these things because of y'all. These are just a, some of our programs and events that we do across the county to bring people together, to have that relationship building, that first interaction with someone with law enforcement, to be a positive one. And I'm not going to go through every one, but I do want to highlight one of these, well, actually two, is, because I didn't even, to be perfectly honest with you, I didn't know about it until Sheriff Irvin from Richmond reached out to me, and the 2022 Night to Shine is Tim Tebow's event that was held down at Hope Church. And Sheriff Irvin deserves a lot of credit, she, she was the, the lead on this, she put it all together. But what it is, it's, it's an event for special needs kids, and it's like a prom, and then they have a big event day, and it is, it is so awesome to see. But we had people from Richmond Sheriff's Office, you know, Henrico PD, Henrico Sheriff's Office, Chesterfield Sheriff's Office, Hanover, you know, law enforcement from the Tiewater areas, I mean, all over the state of Virginia here in Gutcheon, you know, participating in this, and it was pretty awesome, and definitely want to do that again this next year. If you ever get a chance, I'll send it out, because it sort of hit, to be honest with you, it hit me a little bit surprised, we only had a couple of weeks to prepare for it. But I'll shoot it out to y'all. It's, it's worth seeing. If, if you only go once, it's worth seeing, it's, it's priceless. Also, one thing that we're starting up with, thanks to the Gutcheon Schools, is for letting us use some of their space, we're starting up a teen driving course. And what it is, we're, we're not sure on the date on what it is, but it's going to be in May. And what it is, we're going to get that, get with all the kids who are about to get their license, who do have their license, and go over everything where, what do you do when you're contacted by the police? What do you do when you get pulled over? You know, this is what you do, we're going to talk about risky driving. We're working on getting some golf carts, we're going to have a controlled area, there goes, there're going to be a deputy with them, and they're going to run around a track with some intoxication goggles that we have, it's going to be controlled, safe environment. And we're also going to get them to talk on the cell phone and text while they're driving the golf cart. So it's, it's something that we're looking forward to, and I thank the Gutcheon Public Schools for allowing us to do that on their, on their property, so we appreciate that. A couple of other, two other events that is definitely dear to my heart is the Junior Deputy Camp. Another thing, shout out to the schools for allowing us to do it in the ROTC building. This was, as you can see, we had a, we had a lot of, lot of kids there, and it is a week-long program, and they learn everything about law enforcement. We have the fire department there, we have MedFlight come, and that is, is actually pretty cool, seeing it land on the football field. But, and then the last day, we have a huge bloom, or water balloon fight, and I got drenched. They attacked me. But it was so much fun, and we're doing it again this year, and I got the dates at the end of this presentation, but we're doing it again this year, and just going to have a blast all over again. Then Gutcheon County Sheriff's Office, the DARE program, a lot of people didn't realize that DARE went away for a while. And, you know, we planned on bringing it back with partner with the schools, but then COVID hit, but this is the first year we got it back, and we just graduated some kids at Randolph Elementary, we're graduating kids at Byrd and Gutcheon Elementary in March. So very, as a DARE instructor, I was a DARE instructor for several years here in the county, taught at every school in the county, and it's, it is great, and we plan on running with this. We're actually doing a homeschool DARE program, that we're sending out fielders for homeschool kids to see if they want to do it, and we're going to try to work with Jessica, with Parks Rec, and maybe have it at Central High there. So, you know, we don't want to forget the, you know, the homeschool kids and even private school kids, if they want to do it, they're more than welcome. All right, I'm not going to go through all of these, but what these is, these are some of the accomplishments that the Gutcheon County Sheriff's Office has, has completed since January 2020. And with this accomplishments, we kind of, once again, we're going to do it without, without y'all's support and the community's support. And here, I will mention one of these on this page, and it's the Safari Land vests. And what that is, it's a, it's a vest, it's your bulletproof vest, it's, it's cost a little bit more than the ones we were using before, but I can tell you, they are so much lighter, they're so much, you can, flexible, and they're saving backs. You know, they're saving the injuries in backs, along with our outer vests that we have as well. And I think I heard her back here. But I do, another accomplishment is, we have our second canine, which is Corporal Liberty. You want to bring her up? And this is Corporal Liberty, she is in, she is in the academy right now. But this is Deputy Dolan, and, and they are in training and, and what's up, girl? And there in training, we have Patrick Sheridan, who's a lieutenant with Louisa, who is training Deputy Dolan and Liberty for free. It is great. We have a great relationship with Louisa Sheriff's Office, and so far, Corporal Liberty has been, been great. They're sending me videos of her, and she is finding people left and right. So, so it is, it is great to have her on, and she is a corporal, and some people wonder why, well, Deputy Dolan is a deputy, and she's a corporal. Well, the reason why she's a corporal is, she tells him where to go. So she has, Deputy Dolan has to listen to her. But I do, I did want to take this time while I'm up here to introduce you to Corporal, not yet, but we actually have a, a senior at the high school who I think is our senior project to raise money to provide a vest. So that's, I've already talked to her dad, and, and that's, that's just great.
Sorry, I didn't know you could see.
But that is Corporal Liberty. But that is Corporal Liberty. And one of the new things we did with the Canines, since we have some new Canines, that is our, he's actually wearing his new Canine uniform for the first time here. All right. Thank you. So, I know, I can just sit down? So, so one other thing I'd like to point out on here is we have a, thanks, we're working with the fire department and Chief Ferguson, we have a Western Field Office at Company Six. We actually have a little office in there. We have our computer in there. It's secure, it's locked up. We have where we can put our body cameras and everything in there and just lock them up in there. So we actually have a field office, even though our vehicles are our office. We have everything in our vehicle that you need to do at a call. You know, but if we do need to meet somebody, download a video, we go to, we can go to Company Six. We did attempt it at one of the Eastern Fire Companies, but just the internet service is not as good down there as the county internet. Also, and hopefully with the Eastern Fire Department, we can put a field office out there as well. All right, and another list of accomplishments, so three slides, but there's so much more. We actually have a, a lot of people probably don't know it, but we have a bomb robot. But we have a robot. It's a $75,000 robot, and we got it for nothing. It was, actually is Captain Bear and I were going to a meeting up at Rappahannock, and someone called and said, you want to bomb robot to Captain Bear, and he said, yes. So we have a bomb robot. So, and a lot of people don't know this, but we actually, Captain Bear is also a bomb tech. So we have that here in Goochran County.
It's not here?
It's not here. All right. Another accomplishment is our honor guard. We haven't had an honor guard in Goochran County for over 15 years, maybe a little bit longer. This is our honor guard who was chosen out of many PDs and sheriff's offices across the state to be in the inaugural parade this year. And these are the guys and gals who are in it, and they represented Goochran very well. It was a great time. It was very cold, but it was a great time, and this was their first event. So a little nerves with them, but they did, I think we have Sergeant Jones and Deputy Davies in the back, or she went on the call. They did an excellent job. And also an app. We are getting the Goochran County Sheriff's Office app. We're hoping to launch that towards the end of March, and as you see, this is a screenshot from a phone, and what it does is people, you can download the app, the schools can download the app. We have, you can go in here, give tips, you can apply for a job, you know, look at their news feed, look up court cases, anything you want to look up with the sheriff's office, you can find it here. But also, this thing does work. If you see where the, there's a little envelope up at the top. Those, so we can do push notifications. So our plan is if there's a car crash at Fairground, the maidens, and it's blocking the whole road, we're going to put out notifications, you know, use alternate routes, you know, to whoever downloads the app. If we have missing kids, missing people, we can also push it out there. If we have someone that we're looking for that is a danger to society, we'll push them out there, and much in the news and stuff like that as well. But this is a direct link that we can push out to the citizens, to bus drivers, you know, or to bus department to know, hey, we're not going to take our kids that way because there's some type of Also, I mentioned about having classes and training brought to Goochran. These are two of them. These are about the FBI LEDA. It's a leadership program, but next year, I'm sorry, in this October, we are holding an internal affairs investigation here in Goochran County, and then next year, we're holding a Supervisor Leadership Institute training in Goochran County. And these are the ones, you'll have people from all over the state and all over the nation here. And like I said, there's a sheriff from Louisiana that's already signed up for the IA class, so he's coming up for that training. And the events that are coming up, Kids Fishing Day, April 30th. If you're not doing anything, come wet a line with us and the kids up at the Cub Scout camp. Then we're doing our second Junior Deputy Academy at the ROTC building. Even if you come by for an hour, you know, come by and see what we're doing. Come by and see what y'all are helping provide to the kids. We don't charge them a penny to be there, and it's a great time. If you come on Friday, watch out for the water balloons. You'll probably get hit. I won't throw it at you. Then we have National Night Out that we do every year. It's going to be August 2nd this year on the Courthouse Green. And finally, this is just sort of a special thanks to the men and women of the Goochran Sheriff's Office, deputies and dispatchers from me. You know, these men and women behind me go out every day and put their lives on the line to protect all of us, all the citizens, including myself when I am asleep in the bed, and also my wife and daughter and family when they're up and down these roads. So I wanted to extend my thanks to every single one of you. And this is just an example of what we get. This email right here was receiving, was received this weekend, and it talks about Deputy Dolan, you know, finding a wallet and doing something and having an interaction with a visitor from Mechanicsville, and just says praise to the sheriff's office. And I can tell you, people from all over recognize Goochran County Sheriff's Office. They recognize Goochran County. As you can see, at the very last sentence, he said, "Goochran indeed, or Goochran is indeed a wonderful and special community." And I agree with that 100% because it is. And it's because of the men and women at the sheriff's office and public safety and you guys and gals up here on this board that Goochran is indeed a wonderful place and a special community. So I thank the guys and gals at the sheriff's office. I thank you for all that y'all do as well. And I will answer-
Thank you, Sheriff Creasy, and thank you from all of us, for all you do to make it a special community. Questions, Board? Ms. Felkens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question is to the county administrator, and I'm looking at what Sheriff Creasy has requested and then what you proposed in your slide. They look like they align. Are we meeting, does your proposed budget meet the requests?
They do align. We supported all the deputy positions and the part-time administrative and deputy positions. The only thing we did not support were two positions for, what did you call them?
It was a court, it was a security, it was a security officer.
Yeah, security officers. They were not going to be sworn officers.
But you didn't even have that in your presentation?
I did not.
So, so thank you all for-
We worked it out together.
Yes.
Thank you all for lining it up. I mean, not that we wouldn't have tackled it, but that's, appreciate it, appreciate it. So that includes, obviously, you gave us a summary. You had the positions, then public safety vehicle replacements, but Sheriff Creasy showed a bunch of other things, training, overtime pay, dash cam, cage cams, and things like that. We're going to, the budget is going to meet all those detailed requests?
Yes, actually, one thing that we did at the last minute, we were trying to balance the CIP as well as the operational budget, and one of the things that we did is we told, I called him and I said, do you mind getting one deputy without a car? And so we worked it out. We already have eight cars in the budget, eight replacement cars in the budget. So he said, yeah, we can manage. So anyway, so we did that, and that's how close it comes when you're trying to make the numbers add up.
And I saw in the detail on our, page 155 in our budget, I was just looking at the percentage change things, and when I heard the dog walk in, I looked at canine supplies. You're down like 50% on the canine supplies.
We are.
So I hope that just means you had more in the budget than you needed before.
Yeah, and it was part of it was for the purchase.
Oh, okay, okay. But that's a small item. The fuel is, of course, something that we're all paying attention to, and it looks like the budget is a 7.7 increase from adopted to proposed. And I was just thinking, is that enough given the price rise? It doesn't really matter. I'm sure you all use formulas, but we've, I'm looking to Ms. Horlocker, we counted a lot of new vehicles, several new vehicles, plus increase in fuel costs. So seeing that, I'm sure you all comfortable with the number, that made me think, how are you doing this year with your budget? Because I mean, you've been dealing with the increases. So how are things going with your budget in terms of meeting, you know, operating within your budget?
I think with, when it comes to fuel, I think we're-
Everything, I suppose.
Oh, we're meeting everything in our budget. I think we're pretty good.
Overtime, overtime is something you mentioned, and if we adopt the proposed budget, I'm counting on you telling us that that's going to relieve some pressure on the overtime?
It will. It will. The overtime for, you know, the increase is also just to keep manpower on the road and also for the other governmental, government events.
But it should take some pressure. You know, once you get these, there's a time to get the positions filled.
Right. We're hoping, we hope so.
Yeah. And, you know, I always talk to you about this, and is the Kalia accreditation in the horizon?
It is. It is. We, actually, someone in the room is going to be probably leading it up, but we're thinking about probably trying to tackle that, probably, I'm guessing, probably FY 2025.
Gotcha. That sounds good. Well, I'm impressed and appreciate, impressed with what you're doing and appreciate all you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, Sheriff, thank you so much for that presentation. I appreciate it. There's an awful lot there, and I appreciate you not going through every single one, but it struck me as I listened to the entire presentation that one of the themes that jumped out at me that I really appreciate is all the various programs you have, starting with young kids, teenagers, adults, all the way through to bring law enforcement and the community together. Some people call it community enforcement, but to bring them together and to eliminate that we-they and get rid of that two sides bit and just come together as one. And that permeates just about everything you presented, and for me, that's one of the things that you should be commended for. That's just fantastic. The other thing that occurred to me is in our budget presentation, prior to your presentation, we saw the heavy investment this county has made in public safety and law enforcement. And I just looked at that chart, I thought, where would we be today if we didn't do that over the last five or 10 years, the hole we dug ourselves into? And we're trying to maintain that momentum and go forward, but if we hadn't have done that, where would we be today? So I appreciate your sharing with us what your needs are, because if we don't know what your needs are, we can't meet them, and I'm glad to hear that our budget doesn't align with your needs. So thank you so much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Laskett?
Thank you, Sheriff. So thanks, Sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate everything you and everyone does. I wanted to talk to you for a minute about salaries and overtime. So it's actually on one page, 153 of our packet, where you're proposing an increase in overtime. So I thought we were, part of adding more people was going to help alleviate some of that overtime. Can you talk through that with us?
Yeah. What we're doing, and we're hoping, once all the positions are filled, when we revisit it come next year, that it could possibly go down. But as of right now, where, you know, where we're at with the overtime, when we do have COVID hits and other unforeseen circumstances that can happen on a whim, you know, where we have to have people on like we've had last year, that is also sort of a little cushion there when we have to have pretty much all hands on deck for three weeks in a row, where that overtime will get eaten up pretty good in three weeks.
Okay. Follow-up, training. So it was way back early in your presentation where you're talking about training costs, but then later, under another line item, you said the academy was there.
Yes.
So help me put together the training cost so just that I can follow you.
Okay. Well, you have your academy training, which is actually under the correction and detention. The academy, we have to pay a certain amount for Rappahannock Regional Criminal Justice Academy.
Right.
For every deputy, dispatcher, and all that. Also, their uniforms. We have to buy their uniforms for them to go to the academy. They don't wear our uniforms. They wear an academy uniform, and anything needed from the academy comes out of there. The other training in the courts, dispatch, and sheriff's budget is all extra training. It's in-service training, it's supervisory training, it's-
Oh, right. And so that line item, this, is that because of the state budget is done like that? I mean, why don't we just change the title of this thing?
No, I agree with you.
Something it's not?
I agree with you. I was actually talking to our office manager today, wondering, you know, why this is in there the way it was in there. There's several things that have been changed, and one thing is for the government event.
I mean, it's no big deal, but it'd be nice if you called it what it was, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. I really appreciate everything you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Laskett. Sheriff, I had a question and a comment. On slide 10, when you talk about the increase in total calls for service, does that, would a traffic stop initiated by a deputy include a call for service?
That is a call for service, yes.
Have you ever, have we ever looked at sort of as incoming calls takes precedent over being out patrolling?
Correct.
I'd imagine. Have you, do you have any numbers, maybe later that you'd share the show, how many actually traffic stops and patrol calls? I would imagine as the calls come in, come in, then the patrolling has to go down.
Correct.
It'd just be interesting to see.
I don't have them there.
No, I know. Maybe at some point. And then I'm very excited about the teen driver course, and I heard from a citizen, because it's Goochran and everything happens fast, like maybe last night, talking to citizens about litter.
Yes.
So I am hopeful that as you, one of the things that you can, including your teen driver course, is the little anti-littering plug for our county.
We can do.
Just, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, Board. Thanks, Sheriff Creasy.
And thank you, guys.
All right, Board, we've been at this an hour and a half. We have three more presentations, and then Ms. Twisdell's, and we've gotten, we've gotten two presentations in an hour and a half. Are we okay to keep going, or do we want to take a quick, you know, 10-minute break? All right, we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll have to pick it up to make sure we're- The big hand on the seven. Big hand on the seven. The big hand on the seven. Big hand on the seven.
You'll have to read really fast.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for being back. And now we have Chief Ferguson. Take it away, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonhauer, and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here with you today and talk a little bit about Fire Rescue's FY 23 budget request. Before I get started, I just want to say that I'm joined here today by several members of our command staff, Deputy Chief Gordon, Deputy Chief Watkins, Battalion Chief Marky, and we have Board Member Mike Harmon. I don't know if I've missed anybody else, but certainly, if we, any questions that may come up, we'll certainly do our best to, to answer those. It's an honor to present the budget to you and serve as a fire chief and recognize all the, the great work that our volunteer and career members of the Fire Rescue Department do on an annual basis. To some of those points, I know we've had the opportunity to be before you several times recently, and so we'll try to move through some of the slides rather quickly, but certainly as many questions as you would, would like to, to answer. Certainly, by now, everyone knows that 2021 was a really busy year for fire rescue. There was, there were a lot of accomplishments, but also a lot of calls for service. And looking at a 22% increase in our calls for service from, from 2020. With, with that being said, certainly, our budget request represents some of that going forward, all of the forecasts and the expectations of what we think is, is probably yet to come. It's good news that our EMS response times, we tend to monitor those. If you recall, we are bound by the rules and regulations of Virginia Office of EMS to have EMS response time standards for, for the locality, and they have decreased a little bit. The big decrease came when we provided staffing into the fire station's 24-hour career staffing, working with volunteer members in 2019. And we're watching those because we feel like that as the department gets busier, those response times may have a tendency to sort of creep back up. And I can talk a little more about that in a future slide. We certainly visit several hospitals, both in the Richmond area as well as the Charlottesville area. In Ranko, doctors far as the most, and the Bon Secours facilities. Looking at the, the breakdown of the personnel that, that handle the EMS calls, certainly, 85% is handled by career members, 13% by combination crews, and 2% by volunteers. Now, what I'd like you to get from that is that if the calls are increasing, we still have a significant volunteer involvement from the standpoint of the number of calls and the duty hours and so forth that we're able to, to use to, to keep the budget low and that type of thing. But I also want you to know that the investment you're making is also in the right areas, including the career staff, as well as volunteer recruitment and retention, and all the good things that we, we have to, to look forward to and offer on those. Certainly, fire response times are a little bit higher since the last time you saw them. About 12, 12 minutes is the county average. And what I'll tell you about that is, the fire, the fire response times, we have a couple of things that, that drive that, and we do a lot of what I would consider to be cross-staffing between the units, where we have the same group of people on duty in the fire stations that's handling both the, the fire calls and the ambulance calls. So, many times, a crew that's scheduled to be assigned to a fire station may be already on an ambulance call. And if that's the case, then we may have a delay or a fire, a secondary resource may, may have to come and, and answer that. But we are trying to work towards increasing our staffing numbers and to try to work towards more independent staffing for both the ambulance and, and at least one, one fire engine. Again, the fire crew breakdown, 58% career, 18% combination crews. A combination crew, for the purpose of the presentation, is a crew that, that we're very proud of. It's a crew that's made up of both volunteer and career members working together to, to get the job done. And then about 24% of the fire calls are handled by, by volunteers. Certainly, you can get from the, these two slides that we've just talked about, that we have, we have more volunteer participation in fire calls than we have those who actually ride the ambulances. But that's not to say that we do, we do have very dedicated volunteer members that are very skilled paramedics and so forth that, that do ride the ambulances as well. Property losses has gone up a little bit since we finished out the, the calendar year 2021, a little bit, $2.7 million. When you look at, it's almost $3 million. You know, when you look at some of the cost of the homes, and if you have one significant large square-footage home fire, house fire in the course of a period, it can really skew your, your property losses. But certainly, there have been savings as well. Mutual aid continues to be something that we, we tend to give more than we receive, but because, as you've heard me say before, because of our location and proximity to the interstate and where our fire stations are located, in some cases, we're in a better position to, to give more mutual aid to the, to the calls, particularly on Broad Street and the interstate. Louisa County is, is the top, top county as far as who we give mutual aid to the most, Powhatan, Cumberland, and it goes on, goes on from there. Like the sheriff said, training is very important to our business. Things that are low frequency, high risk is kind of what we build our training around. That's not to say that we don't train on all of our topics, EMT classes, fire academies, when we bring in new career staff. We do a, a new higher orientation of many recruit school, as well as all the continuing education classes that it takes for a firefighter or EMT or paramedic to keep their certifications current. Particularly EMS certifications, they have to be renewed every couple of years, or three years, or four years, if you're looking at the, the state schedule for that. So, we have to make sure that we provide the types of classes, everything from the learning platforms that we use, web-based systems, to the actual classes. And then, also, like the sheriff's office, I think Sheriff Creasy did an excellent job with his presentation, we try to branch out and, and allow our folks to go to conferences and classes across the state, try to get new ideas and bring those ideas back, back to our county, and we benchmark against other organizations. For example, later this week, several of us are going into Virginia Beach for the Virginia Fire Rescue Conference, which has a really strong educational component to it, as well as a apparatus exhibit hall that we can see the new equipment and so forth. And we have one, one firefighter that's actually traveling out of state to a cancer symposium for the fire service, something that we are very concerned about. You've heard us speak about before, to try to learn as much as we can about how to prevent cancer in our line of work. We've had many recent accomplishments in the county. Certainly, some of the, some of the ones, the two pictures you're well aware of, a new tanker and a new ladder truck, you know, went into service, but it's been far more than that. And we've had a battalion chief that's been promoted, a captain that was promoted and assigned to the training division to support the things that we've talked about, two lieutenants, we hired seven firefighters. I want to thank you for, for actually what you did to help the volunteer incentives as far as reducing that personal property tax to pretty much zero for a volunteer member for one vehicle. And now it's 2022, so that is in effect, and so we're working those numbers right now to see the eligibility for that, for that first tax bill that comes out into May and June. I also want to thank you for the, the salary increase, the competitive pay plan that you allowed us to implement in January. And I also want to mention to you that one of the things that you had asked us to bring forward was a career development program for that retention piece, but I won't, we don't have that in this particular budget, but I am certain that it's in the hands of HR, and I know there is a pay study being done, and I'm certain that it's probably being looked at and included in that. We do have some, some rough numbers, if anyone needs them, but they, those numbers do not reflect in today's presentation, would come through HR at some point soon. Two new ambulances, personal protective equipment, the OptiCom systems, and so, so many other things, too many to, to list on, on a slide. I know you always ask about our dry hydrants, and I want to tell you that the dry hydrants are in good condition. Every year, we start to look at those and do an annual maintenance, preventative maintenance on those. And we have 65 operational dry hydrants across the county for the rural water supply areas. And of course, we have, if you look at the county, I think Mr. Alvarez said earlier, 85% rural and about 15% growth in development and business. We also have an increasing number of county fire hydrants, which is good. We are just about ready to start the spring dry hydrant maintenance program, and we'll put some notices out to the public and to the landowners that actually allow us to come on their property and do that. Improvements are underway at the Henley Fire Rescue Training Center. We have had, I think we've made a lot of good progress there. We've made a lot of good progress in planning as far as trying to understand what we're going to do with the site there to make it through until maybe a, possibly a new home for the, for the Henley Fire Rescue Training Center. I'll tell you that the burn building has been, has been repaired. It's no longer, we no longer burn in it, but we can do training in it again. We use it for cold training, and we just had new windows in it. And all of the things that were reported that needed to be corrected, the masonry repairs, and the windows, and the painting and so forth, we have been able to complete that, and I commend Deputy Chief Watkins and, and his training staff for, for getting that done. Water rescue continues to be a, a service that we offer, that we see an increase in activity every year. And over the last 12 months, we've been able to put a boat in service, as it's pictured on the slide, that, that we were actually able to acquire from Chesterfield Fire and EMS at a, at a very low cost, and also a brand-new boat that we had ordered. And so, now we, we have four boats, and I think that will, will keep us in really good condition as far as capabilities of water rescue going forward. Emergency medical services is always a busy part of the department. You know, 70-plus percent of what we do is EMS. The department was recognized in 2021 with another Mission Lifeline Award. We placed two new ambulances in service. A brand-new ambulance went to Fife Company 4, and another one went to Company 6 in Haydensville. That allowed us to move, move units around and move a, a unit that was a couple of years old into Mannikin that had low mileage on it, as well as dispose of a unit that had reached its life expectancy and needed to be decommissioned. ZO ventilators that we have been able to use and were purchased with the CARES money continue to prove to be a great medical procedure and skill that is helping our patients, particularly those patients who need CPAP or BIPAP. This ventilator allows for that type of ventilation for those who are suffering congestive heart failure or, or something along those lines. Of course, over the last year, we did a lot with vaccinations. The vaccination clinics that we did at Central Hy- The vaccination clinics that we did at Central High School and around the county, we were able to respond and through emergency management and get that ramped up with the help of the county government and our community and private partners, and I think that was a really good thing that we were able to accomplish, getting some of those first and second COVID vaccinations done. And of course, the emergency medical dispatch, the emergency communication center that's operated there at the sheriff's office, it's a center that we count on every day. The Sheriff Creasy had indicated how busy they're getting with phone calls and so forth, and emergency medical dispatch is something that works really well, that's been ongoing since the summer of 2019, and it saves lives, and they do a great job with that. One thing we noticed was transports. Ambulance transports are definitely up compared to what they were. I know all the board of supervisor members have pagers, and I know many of you have commented on the number of calls that we're doing. But one thing that's adding to the transports, just, you know, in general, calls are increasing. We said twenty-two percent. Or some of the transports that we would have considered to be an interfacility transport out of some of the facilities in the county, such as Shelter and Arms, averages about twenty a month. And Envoy at the Meadows has always been a call generator for the county's fire rescue department. Taco Pines, we're starting to see a few transports there a month, and of course, the Virginia Correctional Center for Women, twenty-five or thirty transports a year. And so having said that, concrete care facilities and facilities like Avery Point that haven't opened yet is something that we really have our eye on and are really concerned about, and building this budget is kept in mind. We believe our members are the key to our success as an organization. We couldn't do, the apparatus that we have couldn't go to calls without the people, and we are fortunate and blessed to have members who are recognized all the time for the great work that they do. Our volunteer numbers for 2021, we brought in twenty-seven new volunteer members, and then sometimes, some of the members we bring in, they help us support functions, and they may not actually be caller-running members, but by far, the majority of the members we bring in certainly do go to fire and EMS calls. And you can see from here that, how that's progressed over the years with the current times. Well, certainly, you could look at the slide, and you could say, well, the volunteer rescue duty hours have decreased a little bit, and we've told you for many months now that that was already on a decline, and we also believe COVID really had an impact on that. But we're happy to say that the fire duty hours are up a little bit, and so that's good. And I don't think you really can separate, sometimes we do separate it out between fire and EMS, but most of activity with the department is generated by some type of EMS need, and fire engines do go to EMS calls, and EMTs and paramedics are assigned to fire engines. Most of our fire engines are also EMS licensed. So I think all of that represents participation in general. We were able, with your approval, we were able to submit our SAFER grant on time. SAFER stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, and this year's SAFER grant was written around volunteer recruitment and retention. And we're hoping that if we get funded, and we should know sometime between August and October, that we could potentially recruit another forty-plus firefighters over the life of the grant, a four-year grant, could fund marketing campaigns, cover some of the expenses that go along with bringing in new personnel, including training and protective equipment, and certainly, we could hire a volunteer recruitment coordinator and retention coordinator, who could, a person who could really get out there and focus solely on that and bring those numbers in and get us back where we need to be. So here's the money slide. This is our budget, our operations budget. I have our entire budget on one slide for you, and we certainly appreciate all the funding that we've received at this point to be able to do the things that we do. And to this year's budget, looks like we're asking for a twenty-four point two percent increase in operations. The other thing I'll talk to you about are our grants, and I want to make sure I explain the grants well. There are three grants that I would call annual or revolving grants, that we all term as grants, that we operate with that help to augment our budget. One of the first ones is going to be ATL, A2 Localities. It's about eighty-two thousand dollars, and it comes from the Department of Fire Programs, and it's funded by the insurance industry, homeowners' insurance and so forth, and can be used for fire supplies and fire equipment. The other is, we tend to call it Four for Life. It comes from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services. It's actually predicated on vehicle registrations sold in the jurisdiction, and twenty-six percent of that money comes back to the locality, and it's roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars that comes to us, and we can use that for EMS, EMS supplies and so forth. The other is going to be Local Emergency Planning Grant. It comes to us from VDM, and this is the only one of the three that actually has a match associated with it. It's about a sixteen thousand dollar match. The grant is thirty-three thousand eight hundred and eight dollars, and it can be used for emergency management. You can use it to pay emergency management salaries, emergency management supplies, and those type of things. And of course, we have to report to each of these agencies on how we spent the money. The staffing numbers this time, Mr. Alvarez had mentioned already that we were looking at six full-time positions, one of those being upgrading the part-time fire marshal to a full-time fire marshal, which we'll talk about a slide or two ahead of us. And then also, one part-time position, which would be a part-time emergency manager that we can talk a little bit about going forward. So explanation of changes in our budget, what makes up that twenty-four percent increase? Of course, personnel cost is always the main thing that drives those costs up, five full-time firefighter EMTs. And then, of course, with that, you know, you have salaries, fringes, uniforms, and PPE that you need to figure in, factor in to get to that number. Fire marshal position upgrade, we do have a part-time fire marshal now, and we request respectfully that that position be upgraded to full-time to meet the demands, growth, and development that we're seeing in the fire marshal's office. Another increase is an increased fire and EMS instruction cost. And what this is, is with the Fire Rescue Training Center, the facility is one thing, but having the staff to be able to deliver the classes is another. And what we're seeing is, you know, we have fewer and fewer members or personnel that are able to give their time to lead that instruction at no cost. And we also have some new programs looking ahead. If we start to have to have career recruit academies, then we're going to have to pay those instructors to teach those, so the fire and EMS instruction cost is something that is definitely adding to our budget expenses for this go-around. So talking about personnel, one of the things that we always strive for is to have three firefighters on every fire engine. We don't achieve that. We try really hard. We have personnel on duty in the stations, both career and volunteers. We actually wait five minutes for a fire, if there's a crew in the station and we don't have that three members there, then we may initiate a five-minute wait before the fire engine responds to try to gain a volunteer member, to make that third person, or maybe two. Sometimes we achieve that, and other times, we don't. That same policy, it's built into so that if there are known extenuating circumstances, we may elect to go with two people and not wait for the third. But all of our staffing is built around trying to work up to at least three people on duty at all times, and eventually, five. So you have independent staffing between the ambulances and the fire trucks, and we're not cross-staffing and moving people between the units. But you can see from the numbers, you know, you can't really measure a fraction of a person, but about two point six people per fire engine is where we are with that, and we continue to work hard with that, and obviously, the volunteer recruitment impacts that as well as the career staff hiring. This is our chart that we show you each year where we have our minimum staffing plan. Our shifts today have the potential to have about seventeen people on duty a day, but I'll have to tell you that today, we have two vacant positions that we need to fill. And you also have to take into account, people have to take their annual leave, and they take sick leave, and all the other things. We have one firefighter that's on a three-year military deployment. We certainly hope at the end of that that he will come back to us. And then we have, from time to time, we may have, you know, one person out on extended workers' comp or something like that. But adding the five full-time firefighters to this year's budget would help us work towards adding that third firefighter to each station, supporting the minimum engine staffing level that we just talked about. It also works for the continuation and reduction of response times, the increased availability in general, and it certainly does support cover and leave. You know, I know you guys had asked about some overtime in Sheriff Creasy's budget, and we also have an overtime increase in our budget. It went from about two-thirty to about two-eighty-seven is what's being requested. And as you get more personnel, you have to cover that leave. You know, if you're going to have X amount of people on duty and people are off, then you have to cover that. And I'll tell you that our staffing numbers have been very conservative to this point. We've asked you for exactly what we needed, and we never built in any extra. Most fire chiefs will tell you, the larger departments, that they do a multiplier. For example, if they need fifteen positions to open a fire station, they'll do a one-point three multiplier, and they'll ask for twenty-one. And that helps to cover for some of that time for firefighters being off for that multitude of reasons that we've already mentioned. So you either pay it in full-time salaries, or you either pay it in overtime. I don't want to mislead you, there will always be the need for some of the overtime to cover things that come up. So that's kind of where we are. I will call your attention to one thing on this slide that is a little bit of a moving target because of the West Creek Fire Station, and we are super excited about the West Creek Fire Station and excited for the citizens of Goochland to have that fire station and more resources on duty. But if you look at FY25, we have twenty-four personnel on there. Now, I'll tell you that twenty-one of the twenty-four are for the West Creek Fire Station. Same logic I just shared, fifteen people, five a day, do the multiplier, you get twenty-one. So that's where we are. And then, of course, we had a couple others that we had planned for that year anyway to bring the other stations up to speed. Now, I say it's a little bit of a moving target. I know we're working as fast as we can to get that ball rolling. Whether that will move to twenty-four or whether it'll stay in twenty-five, I really can't tell you today. I sort of feel like it may move, but twenty-five, I think, could also be realistic for that So I mentioned a time or two that the fire marshal in Goochland County is a part-time fire marshal. But I'll tell you what, our fire marshal, Doug Davies, does the work of a full-time fire marshal. He is always out there, and most people think he is full-time. If you look at the number of business inspections that he single-handedly completes in the course of a year and all of the other things that go along with fire marshal work. One thing that we are noticing, I can tell you, is the increased growth and development in the county and how it relates to business, building permits and so forth. We heard earlier, and knew this already, that 2021 was a record year for building permits in the county and all of the things that go along with that. So a little history on Goochland and the fire marshal program. We'd adopted the statewide fire prevention code in 2004, I believe it was, and we had a full-time fire marshal on duty in the county from 2004 up to 2010. And in the summer of 2010, our fire marshal, Philip Akad, he retired. And that was about the same time there was a big economic downturn in the county, and we were just trying to get out of that. And we had a hard time finding a candidate that wanted to be a fire marshal, and believe it or not, we went almost two years without a fire marshal. And that was unheard of based on where we had come from. But we did it, and we actually were lucky enough to hire Fire Marshal Davies in 2012. Davies had retired as a fire marshal from Inaraco County and brought a tremendous amount of skill and experience with him to the position. And so we've gone from 2012 to present with a part-time fire marshal. The statewide fire prevention code is in place to make buildings safe, you know, for our citizens and our visitors and all the folks who visit the businesses in the county, as well as the firefighters. God forbid the building ever caught on fire, the building would be a little bit safer because of the fire code being enforced. But there are many things that top the fire marshal's time. This morning, for example, both the fire marshal and I, we were in meetings, and Chief Watkins covered two other meetings because we couldn't be at two meetings at the same time on plans review and looking at building plans for the new elementary school, meeting with community development and development review meeting. So there's a lot going on in that. Investigations, fireworks permits, burn permits, all of these things add up to take a lot of the fire marshal's time. The community risk reduction piece of it, making our community a safer place, is really built around three Es: education, engineering, and enforcement. And that's in a nutshell what the fire marshal's office actually does, making things a lot safer in the county. And I also will put a plug into our building official, Mr. Gary Fisher, who is also a tremendous resource, knowing the Virginia statewide fire prevention code and building code. He helps us all the time with that. Transitioning to emergency management. Wow, emergency management, I know you know that emergency management has been busy in Goochland County. The COVID really started that. We've seen one of about every type of emergency. I don't want to say every type because there's still some things, and we don't want to see anything else. But we've had everything from civil unrest to twenty-year floods to hurricanes that almost came here that we were ready for, thunderstorm events, COVID, and it goes on and on. And I can tell you that we've done a lot with emergency management in the county. We've done a whole lot with it, with the new adoption a year ago of the new emergency operations plan. The COOP plan is ready for review and almost ready to go out. But if we had more hours in the day, we could do more, we could do more possibly. And I know there's a lot of plans that are needed for the county government building. I know the schools could benefit from it as well. And one of the things that we're asking for on the heels of just having a snowstorm that impacted us in a way that we never guessed is a part-time emergency management position. I certainly want to say that this is not taking anything away from Robin Hillman, our volunteer emergency deputy coordinator of emergency management, who does a fabulous, fantastic job, and I give her a lot of the credit for leading us in her leadership and taking us to where we are today to be able to ask for this position. So I hope you will give strong consideration to possibly funding the position. Virginia Department of Emergency Management encourages jurisdictions to have someone in a position like this, and then we've also seen some of the associations that do emergency management also promote the same thing. But I think this could, we could really do a lot more for our citizens who do need this type of support at certain times of the year, depending on what's going on. Emergency management is far more than just reactionary, it's prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. So more explanation of changes. To this point, you all have graciously funded a tremendous amount of supplies and equipment and apparatus, and we're asking for some of those in this budget also. There always will be some of that. But one of the things that we think that we need to grow going forward is the human part of our operation from the standpoint of some of the services that we offer and support that we have in the department. One thing I'll tell you is that fire rescue administration has not changed a lot in the past fifteen years. We have added a position here and there of battalion chief, who looks after the career staff and the staffing as those numbers have grown, and we just put up, appointed a training captain that manages the training division. But as far as all the other support we have in fire rescue admin, it's been relatively constant. And as our workforce has grown, it requires more support from fire rescue administration in order to support the field. And so some of the things that we're asking for in this budget, representing some of the changes, volunteer firefighter respiratory clearance program, where the volunteer members would go a medical assessment in order to be eligible and to know that they're safe and healthy to be able to wear a respirator, something that we do not have in its fullest extent today. The Lexipol Fire Rescue Policy Development is an organization that is known for really helping departments get their hands around their policies and procedures. We have many policies and procedures that need to be overhauled, that need to be brought up, and also, the Lexipol Group is a group that specializes in risk management, and they actually, the policies and procedures that they have available are also legally defensible, and they comply with state and federal laws and allow us to operate in a modern way. Fire rescue master plan development. We have, we're actually going to be working with a consultant here in April to We have we're actually going to be working with a consultant here in April to start our ISO review process. And the same consultant group can expand on that, someone who can come in the county that's also has an in-depth knowledge in fire and EMS, and take a look at our operation there in operation in its entirety and make some recommendations. And we think that would be money well spent to get that third-party objective look at, you know, what we're doing in Goochlin County. And certainly, as as local fire chiefs and leaders of the fire rescue department, we know our jurisdiction best. But at the same time, we all need to be open to new ways of doing business, and a fresh eye could possibly, you know, give us some some different insight on a few things, and we would like to look at that. Annual fire hose testing, certainly something that we've had some bad luck with in the past. Some of our fire hoses in the past, while we've been testing it, I know we've had at least two two injuries to two of our career staff that resulted in lengthy workers' comp claims that ended up both cases individuals had to have surgery. And so when you get all the fire hose stretched across the parking lot, it never fails. All the EMS calls start coming in across the county, and we get the same group of people testing the fire hoses as running the calls. And so they're gone, and now the fire engines don't have any hose on them because it's all laying in the parking lot. So we figured out, based on the recommendation of some other fire chiefs, that we could actually bring a bring a vendor in to help us with some of that and hopefully eliminate some of that risk associated with what we've seen in the past with hose testing. We're not the only organization that's had injuries, on-duty injuries relative to hose testing. There are others in the region have too. Same thing with our SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus flow testing. You know, we probably it's a good idea to have have that fresh eye come in and look at that. We certainly a logistics technician has those skills and certainly does a lot of that throughout the course of the year to to be able to keep our breathing apparatus in good condition. But at the same time, bringing someone in allows that process to move along as well. Some other things, we have vehicles, the Opticom. We're looking at vehicle exhaust capture system for the ambulances. And back down to the fire marshal program, again, a little bit more in community risk reduction. We'd like to do more formalized fire safety education. We're looking at could we possibly get a children's fire safety trailer, as well as hosting a fire show that would allow us to showcase the department, could be a recruitment tool, and also get out that community risk reduction message. Our CIP. I know Mr. Lumpkin said ask about the CIP, and I thought maybe this slide, Mr. Lumpkins, might be the one that would answer the fire rescue questions. You can see exactly what's in the CIP for being proposed for FY '23. Emergency vehicle replacement, a ladder truck replacement, turnout gear, fire suppression equipment for the new vehicles, a new tanker, fire rescue training center money, as well as the West Creek Fire Station. And hopefully, we can get a piece of property for the rebuild of Fire Station Two, their encroager, not District Two, but Company Two encroager. But District Two is on my mind, so we can talk about that anytime you guys want to. Looking at the big some of the big projects and one that you might be interested in a little bit, we were able to get a new ladder truck this this past year for the east eastern end of the county. But our plan has always been to operate with with two ladder trucks, and one augments and supports the other. And the ladder truck at Company Five is one that we've had for 29 years. It's a it's a 1993 Pierce. It's 105-foot. We refer to it as a straight stick because it doesn't have a basket or a platform on it. But it's at it's at the point where it was out of service for 121 days last year, and those those are the days that we we had quick records to to support. But it was out of service probably more than that, honestly, for the pieces of a day here and there for different things that were going on. So the maintenance costs on this particular unit are starting to rise, and we had two it went through two transmissions in in just about 18 months. And transmissions for a truck this size are not not inexpensive by any means. The other thing I'll tell you about Truck 605 is when we only had one ladder truck, it was in the center of the county. And there's a there's things, as you know, there are things already in the middle of the county that require a ladder truck. Many of the houses that you see here are two- and three-story houses, the correctional facilities, the nursing home, it goes all of these the buildings that that are already here, community colleges, the schools, and then we talk we're talking about a courthouse complex as well as a new elementary school. And then there are certain calls in the east end of the county that we would want to run two ladder trucks on. An apartment fire, for example, would require two ladder trucks because of the number of people, or those high-life safety buildings would require two ladder trucks, the amount of construction that's going on there in Avery Point. Tanker replacement, our tankers are 20 years old. We'd like to replace tanker 666 this year at Company Six with the new modern tanker that you can see there at the bottom. The tanker at the bottom of the slide is our new tanker that we put at Company Five. It carries a little more water. It's a tandem axle truck. It handles the weight distribution a little bit better. The brakes are better. It's a little safer vehicle when you have the better brakes. And also, you notice that it's not the elliptical-style tanker that we bought in those earlier years. It allows us to carry other types of fire equipment on the truck, a little more versatile in what it can be used for. So you notice the difference right there is, you know, one unit's carrying a ladder and the other unit is not. So we're hoping that we will be able to get a tanker on order as well. One thing that we're being told with fire apparatus right now, it's taken 24 months to receive a piece of fire apparatus. From the day you place the order, don't expect to see it until almost two years, just for the reasons that you already know with supply chain and the way things are backed up. The Henley Fire Rescue Training Center is in the CIP. I know you know a lot about that because we've talked to you about it, opened you in 1981. It's been used extensively, and Chief Watkins and I are going to go to the State Fire Board meeting on Thursday in Virginia Beach and represent a grant that we've put in, hoping to get some money that can help with the burn building replacement and add on to the burn building. More to come on that. The modular classrooms, they're still there. We haven't made any move on those because we've been working with Mr. Alvarez, trying to make sure the investment we make there is an investment that's going to carry on for many years, whether it's Air Department using that property or another county department. But we do do need to look at improving the classroom site. Our association makes a significant contribution to to our operation. It's another financial arm of the of the the budget, I guess you'd say, or its own budget. The volunteer members that we have, the board of directors, the money that they can raise in donations. And they've just actually hired a new executive director, Mr. Martin Dean is working hard. And one of one of the big initiatives that the executive director is looking at is is station improvements. Five of the six fire stations are owned by the Volunteer Association Incorporated, and all are in need of some type of repair, upgrade, renovation, or addition, or possibly complete replacement, and maybe in one case. And so I know Mr. Dean is working hard on that, trying to get his hands around that with the capital that they have to work with today. And I know one of the projects that was completed over the last year that we all see every day is the parking lot there at Company Five. And on the bottom right-hand corner of the slide is an interior renovation plan for Fire Station One in Mannequin that's probably probably going to go relatively soon. The project that I think might go first would be widening the bay doors at Fire Station Four and Fife. But more to be more to be known about that, and I know at some point, the executive director will want to come and address the board and and maybe ask for your support on some of the projects. Association still owns apparatus, and as I've told you before, we were able to donate some apparatus this past year, as well as the county did also, to Charles City County. And we also were able to realign apparatus between stations, which keeps that investment made paying forward. Rescue truck was transferred from from Mannequin to Haytensville, and a small rescue truck from Haytensville went to Crozier. So all all of those are good things that keep keep our budget costs low. The department is engaged in state and regional groups, and we work with stakeholders on a regular basis. These these stakeholders also help us. They bring they bring resources to our department, and we're proud of all of all of those. Challenges and opportunities looking ahead. Of course, the the growth and demands that are placed on us from the community. We expect increased fire marshal duties. We're probably going to need more staff positions, probably is not the word. We are going to need more staff positions to be able to support the numbers that we're putting in the field. We probably we need to expand emergency management because of those duties that are forthcoming. Existing fire station facilities and improvements, locations for new fire stations, Mr. Alvarez mentioned four of those in the budget, and I'll give you the six that that we know of. We have the West Creek. We also have District Two in Sandy Hook. We have the Crozier relocation and rebuild. It does not a new not it's a new location, but not a new fire station. There's a Matthews Road Fire Station in the CIP. There is one in Oilville, and there's another in Rock Castle. Now, keep in mind, some of the the last two I mentioned are like FY '42. It's it's a long, long time from now, but we have a 25-year CIP, so it all it all counts. Recruitment and retention has got to stay in our forefront, our apparatus fleet management, and then, of course, our our fire rescue training center, last on the slide, but certainly not least. And with that, I thank you for your support and be happy to answer any questions, and we have our staff here who can also help us with those questions.
Thank you, Chief Ferguson, for great presentation, and I will turn over to the board. Ms. Laskett?
All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And you know, we appreciate all that all that you do. So I've got a question about the association investments. It's your slide 31.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is the association investing in anything at Company Six?
Well, that's a good question. So the way that works at Company Six, we have we have the building, and anything that's there with the property or the building is actually actually handled by the general services budget. Of course, the fire rescue budget touches it to some degree as well. But our volunteer members at Company Six, they may invest in equipment. Recently, when we transferred the rescue truck to Company Six and they transferred one to Company Two, then there were some equipment that they wanted to they still fundraise. They still have fundraisers. They still have they still have a treasurer. And while they don't have the building expenses, they've invested in some emergency equipment for that truck. They Company Six volunteers have also provided some furnishings for the building, some things that may be amenities that may be above and beyond what the the county budget may provide, such as some of the the dayroom furniture, the recliner chairs, as an example. So the volunteer members at Company Six, being the association, they still accept donations, they still fundraise, and they just their money is actually focused on things other than the building itself.
But you're actually talking about equipment?
Sometimes they do buy equipment above and beyond maybe what we would buy, just to just to share.
We need to have a discussion about that.
Okay, that'll be fine. No problem at all. Any other questions?
Ms. Laskett, sir? The sheriff. You mentioned the burn building. Oh, yeah, thank you. You mentioned the burn burn building. Are you looking to rebuild that in the current location?
That's a good question.
I know at one time we talked about moving it, but
Right.
You've got the training, and you wanted to keep it.
It's my recommendation as fire chief that the training center be relocated to a a new location. However, getting to the point to do that and having something to work with while we're in that transition phase, we have had to make some repairs to the existing building. So what we're looking to do is whatever investment we make there on the Maiden's Road property, we want it to be modular and movable to the new location. So the burn building that we're looking at, that we have the grant in for, that we're going to go represent, is actually a box style, Conex box style, where Conex boxes are stacked or put side by side, and they're outfitted with Class B propane-type live-fire burn props. And it could actually join the old cinder block building, and so it would be relatively close. And then if and when we if we decide that we have, you know, property that we could move the fire training center to, then that investment could be simply relocated to the next location. So we're very financial-mindedness, I guess you'd say, mindful of of not making any investment there on the Maiden's Road property that isn't going to carry forward. For example, there's been some talk about what if General Services would take that location for future years? So if we built a warehouse-style building and maybe had classrooms inside of it, as well as a place for our logistics supplies, that if if and when we vacate the property, that building could continue to be used by General Services. So whatever we do there at Maiden's Road is, in our eyes, is is temporary and looking for the the new location. And I'll just say that, you know, Mr. Alvarez and and the deputy county administrators, and we've had a lot of conversation, you know, where would be a good place for the training center to go? And I don't know what opportunities exist at the Reynolds Community College, but certainly it's an ideal location, and they have a lot of property, and it would be an investment that would continue to serve the community, and it would be an education academic-type investment. So that's that's what we're hopeful for, or some other location. We've talked about Department of Corrections, or and we've even looked at what if we could buy a piece of land, and the question comes up, how much land? And from what we've what we've learned, trying to prepare for the future and making it a public safety training center, because I know the sheriff has some interest in doing that as well, you know, we might need in future years, when it's completely built out, we might need 25 acres is what we may need. It would be better if that property also had water on it, just because of the nature of the type of training that we're doing.
Okay. Once complete, once Avery Point is complete, do you have any idea, based upon the size and number of residents, what your call volume is going to be out there?
Wow, that's a that's a good question. So our figures that we so so we've been told that when once it's complete, it's going to be anywhere between 15 and 16 buildings build out. And some of those buildings are fairly far along. They're multi-story buildings. I can tell you that when we we looked at our numbers for the east end of the county with all of the the growth and development that has been approved and what's been built recently, we estimated that our entire call volume in the eastern of the county could be increased by as many as 1,000 calls. What you have to look at is assisted living.
A year for?
Right, in a year. That's exactly right. And that's taking into account Reader's Branch, Mosaic, Tucker Pines, Avery Point, all of the all of the growth and development that community development had had on list. The thing I'll tell you is there's some some best logic or best practice as far as forecasting some of that. Assisted living beds typically may generate, you know, one call a year for every three of those. And when you're looking at skilled nursing beds, it's at least one one call a year for every skilled nursing bed. And you can look at they're at Shelter and Arms, not to call them out, but obviously they're on our slides, and we're proud to have Shelter and Arms Institute in Goochlin. But, you know, we are averaging about 20 calls a month there, and some months or more, and sometimes to average it'll be fewer. But I can get you that because what we do is we we take the total number of population, and we use a per capita based on the current call volume and the number of residents in the county presently, and we do that math, and we come up with our our best our best guess, I guess you'd say. But that was figured into the 1,000 calls a year.
And then you you mentioned four. When is the ISO review coming?
The ISO, so the ISO was completed in 2017, and we know ISO is is really important to the county. It's the report card for the fire department. ISO has three major areas. ISO is the most points of fire department, 55 points for your fire department, your public utilities department, and water systems is a big chunk of that, and your emergency communications center. So around about every five years or so would be the right time to do an ISO review. And so this is 2022, and so we felt like it would be good to conduct that this year. But we didn't want to wait for ISO to call us, and if they're listening to the presentation, I'd ask them to give us a give us the couple months that we had hoped for. And so instead, we've we've hired a consultant who actually was once an ISO employee, who's going to come in and he's going to help us with with our package and our presentation and just give us some idea of where we are. And we're going to kick that off within the county government on April the 12th, and we're hoping to have a better understanding of how we're doing. And, you know, we just believe with with the budget, the size that we have, and all the things, and all the advancements, and volunteers and career members since the last one in 2017, and the communications center and the new radio system and all that's been done in water system and Department of Public Utilities, we think we stand a a good chance of of making of having some improvement there. some improvement there.
And the last one, what are we funding? They've asked for...
You've funded all the positions?
Oh, so we've funded the six new, plus the full fire marshal funded?
Yes, sir. One of the six does include the fire marshal. Emergency managers, part-time. If you notice, Mr. Sharp, the part-time positions look flat from last year to this year, because the fire marshal would move up, would shift up if it all is approved.
All right, so we've approved the fire marshal funding to full-time?
Yes, sir. That's what we've requested.
Emergency management to full-time?
It's approved.
Requested. Emergency management is...
You are recommending.
Yes, sir.
The emergency management also be funded to full-time?
Part-time is what is in the budget request.
It's part-time?
It's part-time.
We don't have an emergency manager right now, so it's proposed to part-time.
That's what Robin's doing.
Robin is... The way that works is Mr. Alvarez is the director of emergency management for the county. The fire chief is the coordinator, and Robin Hillman is the deputy coordinator of emergency management. So we all are wearing multiple hats and doing what we can for emergency management, but we think we've reached a point with the needs of the citizens and the types of events that we've been dealing with, that it needs more attention. And I know, again, nothing... Robin Hillman is a blessing, and she does as a volunteer, and she's all behind us, trying to make sure that we can continue that progression to serve our citizens.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Thanks so much for that presentation. I really appreciate it. And thanks again for all you do and all your people do that are behind you on this, especially through the pandemic. We heard the sheriff had to dust off his headphone and get involved. I think you ended up running some calls as well.
One or two.
So thank you for that.
Still have a couple outstanding reports, right, Deputy Chief Gordon?
Didn't do the paperwork yet. Great presentation. One of the things that jumped out at me is the kind of step function increase when that new station comes on, and the numbers were at 21, folks. What can we do, I guess, to help you manage through that process? What's the chances of just being able to go out and hire 21 people? You know?
Well, it's a lot easier said than done, and we all know that.
Let's know what we can do to help you on that. What's the plan?
Well, so I think everything you do for us in this budget in previous... It helps us. It builds the image of the organization and what we're able to do as a department. I can tell you that we are planning ahead. We've increased those instructional costs, because we think we're going to have to have a recruit school, a career recruit school. We think we're going to probably end up having to hire good people with good moral and ethical values, and then train them to be a firefighter, EMT, and maybe some will go on to be paramedics in later years, much like the other larger departments are doing it. We, you know, up to this point, we've actually advertised for pre-certified personnel, and that pool is dwindling down. We're going to open our hiring process again, hopefully March 1st, and with our salary increase, which is another thing that really helps to attract the type of caliber of people we're looking for. We're hoping that we'll see numbers go up, even in the pre-certified numbers that, once we open in March. But the training center is one of those things, we've got to have a place to conduct this training, and the training center is one of the things that would help us with that and continuing to grow the training division and having the money for the instructor costs and that type of thing. Because you're right, I know what you're getting at, you know, it's going to be really hard to get those numbers. And we're hearing our peers and other jurisdictions say the same thing, and they just don't have the numbers apply for the jobs that we used to.
Yeah. I mean, the last thing we want to do is build the brick and mortar and have it be empty.
And no one to be there. That's exactly right.
Maybe a staff up in advance, or whatever we can do to smooth that.
Well, we probably would try to... Once we know the timeline on when the station is actually going to open, we would try to do that a year ahead of time. And if we had to put some of the personnel, if they came out of recruit school a little bit early, and we put them around at some of the other stations until the new station opened, then we could move them to the stations. But again, Executive Director Martin Dean is working hard, because some of our facilities have limitations on how many people you can really comfortably be there for 24 hours a day. And so I know a lot of that is that he's working on and support him and his efforts, and it all would add up to make that possible.
Mr. Sharp, maybe one follow-on. The brick and mortar is part of the equation, the people, the 21 people are part of the equation, then there's the equipment.
Right.
Is all the rolling stock equipment in the CIP as well?
Yes, sir. So we're looking at $8.2 million in the CIP slide for the West Creek Fire Station. You can figure by the time you buy a fire engine at today's cost, we have one on order now that's roughly $750,000 in equipment, that's a million dollars. And we... Chief Watkins just went to Ohio yesterday, fast trip back and forth, and inspected their latest ambulance coming off the line, and that ambulance was $291,000. And Chief Watkins is telling me that he's hearing that there could be a 40% increase in ambulance costs. And so, but then you have to equip the ambulance, you know, a cardiac monitor defibrillator is $30,000, a stretcher is $16,000. It goes on and on. So a couple million, I think, you know, for the apparatus costs, and then some of the furnishings of the building, you probably will need a turn-acquire washer in there, you know, and all the things that go along with having a fire station. But I think Ms. Holacker would probably tell you that we've planned for those costs in the project, so...
Great lead-in to sort of my question. So in your budget, you have $2,023,000 for $493,000 and change for the total service level plan? Is that the ISO review?
No. Service level plan is just the way the finance department breaks it down. If you guys would like to...
It's the new positions.
New positions, okay.
A little different terminology.
One of the things I'm hopeful that, and we spoke about it when we were riding together, was that some of these studies that we're doing could challenge some of the assumptions that we've made either favorably or maybe even more. But I'm hopeful that those studies that we're doing will lend to some information on that. Is that fair?
Absolutely. If we do a study, if we do the master plan, it will give us some insight, everything from personnel to locations to apparatus, and gives us that look at, you know, how we're doing and, you know, a fresh set of eyes looking at it. And it's not unusual for a department to request such a thing. This is something that started at the ground floor in our department, and we thought it would be a good idea to... We want to learn. We want to see what's going on. The one thing that challenges us with any of that, though, is the amount of growth and development that's already approved, that's going on like right now. We don't have a day to wait for anything that we're asking for. You know, when you talk about a fire truck taking two years to build, you know, there are obviously things that we know that we need based on our experience and our talents and skills, the command staff and the leadership team. And so the things that we're asking in this budget, we don't feel like would be hinging on anything that came forward in a master plan.
Great. And then just one kind of... One of the things that we, you know, I always look at is the response times and then the apparatus staffing. And, you know, with a number like that, if, you know, four is your optimal, and you miss one, you're never going to be there again. So you're always, you know, it's not like in today's where you can get, you know, a 5.0 to help your 4.0. It may be helpful to see for each vehicle what percentage of trips went out less than optimized, optimally staffed. So if we were to say, hey, our engines went out 50% not optimally staffed, that could paint a pretty interesting picture.
That's a good... That would be a good number to look at, a good metric to look at. You know, we... It takes, going back to what I had mentioned about fire rescue administration, the way that we have the positions we have, they're the same positions we had in previous years, and we all build reports. And the folks behind me have been working really hard the last few days, pulling all the numbers together for the incentives to send to the commission of revenue, so that we know who met the criteria for incentives. And we have a lieutenant in the fire station who does his fire and EMS duties, who is really good with metrics and the report software and so forth. And so when we pull all these together, it's usually a lot of us will put that other hat on and run those reports for a little while, and then we go back to firefighting or managing an EMS call. So you're right, and that would help us to have that. And looking at future years, you know, we probably... We have a couple of different softwares that we have to go in. It's not all together in one software, and some of it is a hand count as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say, folks, men and women of the fire rescue department are the ones that deserve the credit. They do a great job every day, and we couldn't do it without the support from our citizens and our board of supervisors and local government. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, Mr. Green. Welcome, welcome. You didn't bring any puppies, huh? He must not want his budget approved, I'm telling you.
Their merits.
Good afternoon, members of the board. There we go. Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to present our budget proposal for fiscal year 2023. Animal control is split into two different sections. One's the field services, and the other is the animal shelter itself, after the animals are brought in and the care and custody of those animals. As you can see, calls for service have jumped about 100 from last year, and we anticipate with just the growth of the county, that's going to be a trend that continues. Animal intake is up about 100 animals from the year prior, and I can tell you from my experience in French George County, that's kind of one of those, if you build it, they will come scenarios. So we had a nice facility down there that we built, and then we jumped from like 800 to 1,200 animals in one year, just in intake. The outcomes, luckily, we have a great response from the community, and we're able to place about 95% of the animals a little bit north of that. We had adoptions and transfers, but the vast majority are adoptions. Volunteers, we have an outstanding volunteer program. We have more volunteers waiting to be trained than we are able to train currently. We do them in groups of like 15 now, because we have so many that really want to come in and volunteer.
Do any of them want to do fire rescue?
We can ask them. If they want to get up on a ladder truck, yeah, right. We can make incentives like that if we have to. Volunteer participation, you can see, it's been fabulous. I mean, this was from about a week and a half ago. We had about 390 hours in February, so it spiked over the holidays. We had a little dip, of course, but that's to be expected. Goochlin Pet Lovers, great organization. Part of the reason we are able to keep costs down is because of the support they lend us, especially with veterinary things and supplies. If we need things, they put out the call and are able to, you know, get us items we might not be able to afford otherwise, or bring in specialists like behavioral training for dogs and cats. So they reimburse the county for that, which is awesome. Like I said, they have the onsite dog trainer, onsite cat behavioralist. Current department staffing, as you can see, we're just down one animal control officer and one part-time shelter attendant. So we have five animal protection officers, one full-time shelter attendant, and two part-time people. And the budget. So basically, we're asking for or proposing one position increase, which would be the shelter coordinator attendant. That would be somebody... The coordinator position would also encompass the duties of a kennel attendant. They'd be cleaning and doing all that, as well as assisting with the medicating of animals, the administrative work. There's a lot of hard paperwork that the state requires we keep on hand, and we also have to have that in the software system. So there's a lot of data input, plus assisting citizens with adoptions and things like that. And then just the cost of vaccines has almost doubled, wormer almost doubled. So the things that we pay for, the heartworm and AIDS leukemia test for cats and dogs, that has grown exponentially, as a lot of medical things have. And then we asked for site improvement for a two-horse livestock corral behind the existing shelter. The Deep Run Hunt Club had provided money for that, I guess, at the beginning, when the shelter was being built, and water and electricity has already been run to the site where that would be. And that would be similar to one that Henrico County has right now at their animal shelter. And just future outlook, we want to do some leadership training for the management staff. That's something that's never been... Never happened prior. Increase the volunteer engagement, participation, recognition. We're open to do a volunteer recognition day in the summer. Look for ways to partner with more civic groups and businesses, more adoption events, partnering with direct department. We're doing a pilot program, cat yoga at the animal shelter at the end of March, and that's something we're excited about. They do it at a lot of cat cafes and things like that, so we're going to give it a shot and see how it worked out. Rescue Dog Olympics with GPL at Licking Hole Creek Brewery, where people who've adopted animals from shelters bring them, and they compete in fun events with their rescue dog, like kisses per minute, things like that, and there are awards and such given. So...
I'm sorry, it's scheduled?
That's scheduled for May 21st, Saturday, May 21st, from 12 to 2:00. And just thank you. Thank everybody, thank the board. Appreciate it.
All right. That was quick.
I tried to make...
Board, any questions? Sir, does our proposed budget match the request?
Yes, except for they had asked for an APO and one shelter attendant, and we went with just the... I'm sorry. We went with just the shelter attendant. My own microphone. Did you all hear that?
Animal protection officer, yes, sir.
They requested an APO and a shelter attendant, and we approved the shelter attendant. We were able to work it in our budget. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Lucas? Go. Go. On your... For the animal outcomes and the intake, the intake numbers, they also... I know that there are times when we seem to be, like you said, when you build, they come. If you move them, the people will give them to you.
Yes.
So I know that there are times where we've taken animals from surrounding shelters. Do those numbers, are they included?
Yes, they're included in the intake. That is correct.
And then from the outcomes perspective of 95%, I know about a year ago this time, there were some concerns from some folks that a lot, that maybe more animals were being transferred out, as opposed to Goochlin citizens getting a chance to be adopted. How do you feel that's going?
That's... The vast majority of animals we have now are being adopted. If you just look, there's the largest spike. We actually reduced the number of transfers to other facilities, and we've increased the amount of adoptions.
Yeah, and that number two is going to be skewed, because there's certain animals we have to transfer just because of the state that they're in.
Correct. Right, correct. Like the Richmond SPCA, we have cats with AIDS and leukemia, and they have a waiting list for people who have other cats with AIDS and leukemia. So those are the type of cats we would transfer to the Richmond SPCA, just because they have adopters waiting for an animal with a possibly contagious disease.
Sharp? Can we have people dropping off horses?
We had a Holstein bull. We had a Holstein bull. We had a miniature horse and a regular horse. I'm not a horse expert, but... And we had all three of those at one time that were needing to be placed, and now we have a billy goat at the shelter. So we pick up... I mean, when you're 85% rural, you're going to run into these things, so...
In Chesterfield, we had taken a camel, Jacob, that was not well-fed, so we had a camel.
Correct.
And it's not... And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not about the people bringing one in, but you might have to rescue one that's in a bad situation.
Correct. Right. The bull and the two horses were just running loose. They were able to escape from this person who wasn't able to contain them, so we had to transport them to a place, and then that person wanted us to get them off their property, pronto, so that is the reason we really would like this corral, to be able to keep them at the... On our property. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Rice?
Hello. Ms. Rice? Hello. Lisa, where's the... Where's the... Have I...
There's no mouse.
Oh, it's hiding, that's why. It's hiding.
It's hiding from the yoga pit cats.
Can't get a cat to come to you. You're going to get it to do yoga?
Thank you. Probably not. Okay, here we go. Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know if I can beat his time, but I'll give it a shot here. So I'm... Oh, Human Resources Workforce Report. This is something that we do every year, and it's going to recap our statistics for 2021 that we just finished out, and then the second portion will cover staffing requests, So I'm, oh, Human Resources Workforce Report. This is something that we do every year, and it's going to recap our statistics for 2021 that we just finished out. And then the second portion will cover staffing requests, compensation, proposed changes, and any benefits, proposed changes coming into FY '23. So this is a snapshot in time, as of December 31st of 2021, the number of staff that we have here in the county. And this does include our constitutional offices. Anything that you see in blue on this slide and also heading into future slides are going to represent previous year, just for a point of reference. So currently, we have 302 employees on staff in our constitutional offices. And you can see the numbers for last year. We are up significantly from where we were. And that was due to new approved positions in the previous budget, and then also we had approval for new positions throughout the year as well. The next slide is kind of the fun slide. This talks a lot about demographics of our staff. You can see where the average salary is now $60,600 and change. Last year was $56,000. The average age of employee right now is 43 years old. Last year was only, was 44, so we're pretty close there. Years of service, five years. Males versus females, 181, 116. And then our minority rate right now is 15.2%. We are up from the past two years there. And then a new statistic I presented for you all last year was the county citizenship. And so you can see we're a little bit over 40%. That is a little bit low. There are other counties where it is higher. You'll see it in the 60s and 70s. Okay, so from the HR department last year, we had a very busy year. In fact, it was kind of record-breaking in a lot of respects. The numbers of jobs posted almost doubled. And then you can see the applications received in response to those. And we actually measure the applications received from our minority population as well, and you can kind of gauge where that. We received fewer number of applications from our minority groups. Number of new hires, 70 new hires compared to 46 the previous year. And then the percentage of minorities that were hired is a little bit lower than the last two years, which is to be expected when we have less applicants, so. Separations for 2021, on county staff, we had 27 people leave us. 13 were full-time, 14 part-time, compared to 23 last year. In our constitutional offices, we did have 10 leave us this year compared to the 13 last year. And it ends up being a 13.2% turnover rate. And some of the reasons are broken down on the side there. We did have seven retirements this year, which is a little bit higher than in previous years. Four involuntary separations, and then 26. Either there was no real reason given, or they took another position elsewhere. As far as benefits go, the county health insurance plan has been the same for several years now. We do offer three tiers of our health insurance, a high deductible plan, a $500 deductible plan, and a $250 deductible plan, and then a high and low tier of dental coverage. And you can pick and choose what fits your family, employee-only, employee plus one, or the family. Of our eligible workforce, 91% of our staff are enrolled in our health insurance plan. That is an outstanding number. As one, as another benefit the county has graciously provided for everyone is if you retire from Goochlin County and you're not yet 65 years old, we do allow you to stay on the county's health insurance plan. You're responsible for paying for the full premium yourself, but you do have that coverage available for you. And then if you've been with us for 15 years, we will give you a health insurance credit to apply towards that coverage. This is something that's been in the policy for several years. We have currently four retirees that fit that description right now. We had two of them drop off from the previous year. They either aged out or found other insurance. Pay increases historically, so I have the past 10 years' worth of merit increases that the county has provided to staff here in this graph. Every year, except for 2012, I wasn't here then. I can only assume that I was economically driven. And then, of course, in FY '21, during the COVID pandemic, where we kind of froze a lot of things, there was no percentage increase there. What this doesn't show you is any bonuses, one-time lump-sum bonuses that were given there. And the same goes for this chart. So these are our neighboring counties, and the pay increases that they've provided over the course of several years, five years up there, you can kind of see their trends. That does not include any one-time bonuses that they have provided either. And we are happy, of course, to provide this deck to you for further study later on. All right, so the FY '23 outlook, I'll talk briefly about health insurance, position requests, and some compensation proposed changes for this upcoming budget. This slide, you're not going to be able to read that. So what I wanted to share with you is that for FY '23, we have no premium increase in our health insurance policy, and that is fantastic news. We were looking at about 1% to 2% previously, and we got the phone call about a week ago that there is none. So what's nice about our health insurance plan is there's no proposed changes to it. We do offer one of the richest benefits of even the surrounding counties, because you can pick up a $250 annual deductible plan for employee-only for only $50 a paycheck. The other piece to that is anyone who has a family in his own or health insurance, the county is actually paying either 68% or 73% of the premium, when other surrounding counties are paying around 40%, and some of them don't even cover spouses. So we do use our health insurance as a recruiting tool. It is discussed when we go and make offers and things like that, and then information is shared with them. And we've actually been able to get some good candidates because of the policies that we do offer. Okay, so new staffing for FY '23. You've seen some of these already. Mr. Alvarez did cover this earlier. If you look on the right-hand side, you'll see a summary of all of the public safety positions that were included in his proposed budget this afternoon. And on the left-hand side, you will see general government. There were 36 total requested, and this includes the three that were previously approved at a board meeting to start earlier this year. So you can kind of see the breakdown there. Three in utilities, and a new environmental inspector in public service, and then a couple in parks and recreation. We have sports field technician that was added in January at a previous board meeting. And then converting a recreation supervisor from part-time to full-time. These are the other positions that were not included in the county administrators' proposed budget, 11 of them. We had a part-time administrative assistant in general government, an assistant county attorney and HR manager, two motorist assistants/ security, which the sheriff talked about earlier, and you can see the animal protection officer, the groundskeeper, marketing coordinator, and an environmental planner. As far as compensation, the county administrators' proposed budget did include a recommended merit increase of 3% at this time. And that's kind of what we've planned for, and that's what the balanced budget reflects right now. However, we are just in the beginning of the planning and altering phases of the budget before we get to final adoption. There is a new minimum wage mandate coming out for January 1 of 2023, and that is that all employees will make at least $12 an hour. We are already in compliance with that. The county took care of that just a month ago. We implemented that in advance in preparation for this. So we're above board there. And then as far as any pay plan adjustments, we do have a benchmark study underway. They are looking at surrounding counties, and some, there may be some private sector in there as well. They're looking at our current pay plan, the structure of it, and the bands itself. They're looking at whether different positions should be earning overtime or should be on salary, and that's what that FLSA status is. And then also, they're looking at internal equity and how we compare to the other localities in the market. They are not looking at health insurance, just pay only. We do, we do expect some numbers back from, from the organization at the end of April. And we'll be able to work with whatever money that we have set aside in the proposed budget to try and work to get some of that pay plan straightened out based on their recommendations. We'll be able to present that to the board later on. So just a quick recap, no health insurance increase. We do have 25 new positions proposed right now. We have a 3% merit increase proposed right now. And then we are also working on the market alignment and salary scale study right now. What questions do you have for me?
Board, this last one.
Rice, so how can we get the benefits included in this study? That looks like it's, or is that something that we'll just do ourselves and add into it?
The benefits?
Health insurance cost, yes. Because it sounds like you said we're significantly better.
We are. So this, this particular RFP and company and consultant only focus on compensation. If we wanted to do a benefits analysis, we have a couple of different things we can do. We can actually look to somebody else to go do that. But I also have a benefits consultant that we already have working with us right now. And he has access to see where everyone else is as far as their, the premiums that they're paying and stuff. And I can have him look into that in the meantime to get us some answers.
So you'll just take what we do on the benefits, on the insurance, and then combine it with what we're paying the consultant to do on the salaries, and give us a final report. Is that right?
Compensation?
That's right.
Is that what you're looking for? Yes. Yes, we can put that together for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can we go back to the, to the, the cost slide?
The cost slide?
The cost of premiums.
Yes, the one that's hard to read because it's just a PDF picture.
So these are monthly shares, so a single person is paying $50 a month for health insurance.
So somebody who's on the 250 deductible plan, it's employee-only, it's $100 a month, it's $50 a paycheck. We get paid twice a month.
Because I'm just looking, we talked about this a year or two ago about eliminating a 250 deductible because of the cost.
Right.
If you look right there, 70 times the difference of 50 to, that's $35 a month difference. No, it's 100. So it's really $70 a month difference, times 12 is $840, is that right? So to go from a 250 to a $500 deductible, they're going to save a substantial amount of premium.
Right.
It gets people, it gets our cost down, but it also, the employee learns, I can save $800 and maybe spend 250 if I can to go to the doctor.
We, so last year. Yeah, we did. We talked, we talked about it last year. There were changes that we made, I'd worked on, and we all kind of agreed on. And it was the first time that the premiums had been changed in quite some time, and so we did end up increasing 250, not as much as the 500, and we're starting to level that off, because that's actually the advice of our third-party administrator as well, is hey, you're offering a 250 plan here, which is fantastic for employees, but you got to watch the, their usage and their expenses and their pharmaceutical costs, because it's going to come back to haunt you if Anthem starts raising your premiums up. And we were talking about that a lot last year. There was no increase proposed this year. And so it was just kind of a leave it as is, also because we're battling recruiting right now. And this is not a new story. We've talked about this before, where it's kind of hard to raise the cost to somebody's benefits when you're struggling to, to be able just to recruit employees in general when we have a stable premium coming up for the next year. But yes, we did, we did talk about that. We could certainly look at that. And I can have our third-party administrator look around and see what the other localities are doing as far as our health plans right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of questions here real quick. Could you go to slide nine? That'd be great. We're doing this study to make sure that we're in the right place, the right, this is, we're in the right place, right time. As part of, are they going to be asking whether or not other counties use deferred comp as a way to retain citizens or employees?
I don't recall that that's a specific question that they put out on their survey.
Because again, we're trying to make it apples to apples. So if we're looking for total comp, it's current comp, deferred comp, benefits. We're looking to be competitive on a total comp basis, so it might be a question worth asking. The second one is, as soon as this study is, ink's dry, it's going to be outdated, because these, as you, as you know, go through FY '22. And I see a lot of 2%, 3%, but that's not what I'm hearing about for '23, so.
No, no, in fact, I.
So when we get the numbers from them, if it's only through '22, we then need to pay attention and adjust all those numbers based on '23's information.
They've been, yeah, they're being asked to, if, if at all possible, if they were able to get the information to include any sort of across-the-board increase that's going to be taking place in July. All the localities right now are at the same starting line that we are. This is a race to the finish. And so they're, they're literally just presenting their proposed budget at the same time, too. So even though they're presenting, I heard something ridiculous like 7.9 somewhere, that doesn't necessarily mean that's where it's going to end up.
Sure.
So we're, we're, yes, that, that part was definitely discussed.
If they're targeting '22 and they hit a bullseye in '22, it may miss the mark for '23, that's all.
Right, yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess. Please, I have my microphone.
Okay.
So I, and I was doing some research over the weekend on races, and the only thing that's out there is school boards, because they've already presented their budget to the board of supervisors, like, in most cases, in many cases. Or they've had it approved by other school board.
Thank you. Mr. Lockins? You know, back to the health insurance, I, you know, hard for me to not speak up on that topic, because I, when I was on the school board, so what I'm like eight years into this, where I think we just really could do a better, maybe it's not fair to say a better job, but we should focus on, on benefits. You use it as a recruiting tool, that's great, but it needs to be figured in, like, like you were just saying, total compensation, maybe all, unique things we do. But, but the benefits needs to, we need to good, we do it, use it as a recruiting tool. We ought to use it all year long. But to Mr. Sharp's, you know, when Mr. Sharp kind of chimed in, I was like, oh, here we go. I'm going to latch on to this. The, the top of that chart was the 250 plan. I think the percentage participation across that shows. So, so how many people are in high deductible plan? Four.
Right.
Total of four employees.
Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers right now, but I do recall last year, it was.
That's not 4%, that's four people.
Four people.
So, so our other two plans, the 250 and the 500, that's it. We have three plans.
And over 80% are in the 250 plan, 80 to 85, something.
85% of the people. So, and you, you can look at the chart and see why. People are going to do that.
But they could save money going to a 500. That's the insane thing. You're spending more money out of your pocket to have a lower deductible than if you went to a higher deductible and you had money in your pocket.
And, and to your point, which is amazing that you have that high percentage participating in that plan, where our advisors cautioning us about that, saying that can come back to bite you, which is amazing that we get a 0% increase in this environment. So we have healthy employees, or we've had a good experience, right? People are still, you know.
Yeah, it was really interesting, just to wrap up really quick, when we were talking with the gentleman who goes through our claims with us and stuff, and the highest number of claims actually were, over the past two years, have been mental health. And that was really interesting to see how that played out. And it's not just, you have to remember, we're also not, it's not just us standalone. We're pooled with social service staff, the school staff, and CSB. And so we're looked as one large unit. And when we're looking at our high-dollar claims, the majority of them, honestly, were, were mental health-related.
I think there's another component, I could be wrong here, but with looking at the plans, there's also a cop, the copay factor. looking at the plans, there's also a co, the copay factor-
Right.
Which is much better. So it does, if somebody's thinking, hey, I'm thinking more catastrophically, in combination with my cap. So while from a deductible perspective, it may make sense, from a copay perspective, it may not seem as attractive.
Yeah. My, my point is that we really need to, this board needs to be informed of the whole package when we're making decisions, because that is part of the compensation. And then I think we ought to tap into our consultant or listen to our consultant and try to move this thing away from such a high percentage participation in that area where, because there's, I mean, I, I say this, but then I've been sitting here waiting for that job. We've had times where we're talking, hey, you're going to have 6, 6 or 7% increase. And then they come in at four. So we're doing something right, or, or maybe we're being too conservative in our projections of what's going to happen. But, but at least we can, I think we can position ourselves better to have a smoother transition if we ever do get hit in a, in a tough experience, experience year. So anyway, I thank you.
You're welcome.
I just encourage all of us to stay focused on that.
Hold on. Could you go back to slide four, real quick? I apologize.
No, you're fine.
I'm having a hard time just deciphering this.
Okay.
So if I'm looking at this, what I'm struggling with, if the first line is 47, 26, the number of jobs posted, how did we hire 70?
So if we have a job posted, I'll give you an example. Our, we've, we've posted recreation aid or assistant, and we actually make four or five hires off of that one job posting.
Okay, so it's not positions posted?
Correct.
Okay. So I think that would be, you know, we get a lot of questions about our, our minority hiring efforts.
And that's why some, I've included some of that, yeah.
I get it. I think to, to really get into really how we're, where we are, no, you know, I can't really decipher too much from this because it's not, we have more hires than jobs posted. So it would look like we're at, we hired 15 minorities out of the 100 that we had apply. Does that be right? So if you had 18.5% of 536 is 99.6, round up to 100. So you hired 15 out of 100. Does that sound right?
That sounds close.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure I understand.
Mr. Chairman, I think you can also see that while only 18.5% applied, 21.4 were hired.
I see that. And then what, the other question I had was if our number's going down, how did our minority mix go up of total staff? So our minority rate went up to 15.2% with more positions and less people, less percentage hired.
Because of the number of sta, number that we already had on staff.
So we've added of the, people applied was a smaller number, but we hired 21% of the 70. Add, add that to the current, which was-
So this is the slide, okay. I could dive into it later.
Mr. Chairman, that, that, this slide, when you put this slide up, the question I had, and I thought I would just go look at one of our applications, but do we ask people to identify their race-
We do.
On the application?
It is. And it's actually captured separately from the application itself. We use a software program called NeoGov. So you will see a couple of them, what that will just select, I choose not to, or, or they'll leave it blank. In, in that case, I don't count that number. So, because I don't know what it is.
You take it off of the, what's that? Numerators on top, denominator on the bottom, right?
Yes.
You take it out of the-
I don't know what the nu- math, it may not be.
I don't think that's a point four.
Unless it's greater than one. But, but you take, you take it out of the denominator.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Board. Thank you, Ms. Rice. Appreciate it. All right. Ms. Twisdell, you need some information from us.
Uh-oh. I may need help.
I can do it, too.
I love it.
As long as the board cooperates, we can be done in two minutes.
Sure. Any other motion sheets?
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Board. This is Mariana Twisdell, Director of Financial Services. We have four public hearings that we hold for the budget. And basically, the only thing that you're doing right now is authorizing these four public hearings. The first one is for the real estate tax increase. We are advertising a 53 cent rate, which is not an increase in our tax rate. However, due to the assessments going up, it is an increase in the effective rate. Based on our assessments, it's 48 cents. We are advertising 53. So technically, that's an effective rate increase of five cents. We have to hold a public hearing on April 5th to advertise that tax rate. And there is the motion. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Questions or, or a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion so we can get, see if it gets a second, then we can discuss it. I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve advertising the attached notice and setting a public hearing for April 5th, 2022 to consider the 2022 real estate tax.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The second public hearing that we hold is for the proposed county administrator's budget, the school's budget, the capital improvement program, and all tax rates. This is on page 11 through 14 of your packet, if you want to look at the specific numbers that are in the budget at this time. And there is the motion, if you don't have any questions.
Okay, Board? Be alert, be alert.
Where's it checked? Did you say 13? Oh, page a little, oh, I'm in the budget book. I'm reading ahead again. I'm sorry.
No, that would be in your packet.
Just make, just make, just read what's on the screen, John.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve advertising the attached notice and setting a public hearing for April 5th, 2022 to consider the FY '23 budget and 2022 tax rates.
Second.
Thank you to my senior board members in tenure, not in age. Any discussion?
Both.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And number three.
Number three, we need to hold a public hearing for the proposed ordinance to increase the real estate tax relief for certain elderly and disabled persons, as Mr. Alvarez talked about earlier in his presentation, from $900 maximum to $1,000. And there's the motion. Unless you have any questions.
I do, I do have a question. If this passed, we cannot go higher than 1,000 in terms of relief. Is that the case?
As far as tax rate, you can't go up. I don't believe that you're held to this.
No, I don't think so. This is not a tax rate.
No, this is not a tax rate. This is just what we're currently-
At least that's my understanding.
So we could, we could, if, if we so choose, we're not limiting ourselves to the amount of relief that we could adopt?
Right. It's that, I mean, I, I would have to do some research, but I believe that's correct. I think the, as far as I know, the only thing that you're locking yourself into at this point is tax rate.
Okay. Yeah, but this needs to be, this, oh, this is a, effectively a tax reduction, so I don't think-
Yeah.
It would be-
Yeah, you'd be going down anyway as far as what, what people were paying. And at this point, it's, appears this is going to only affect about 200 people that are currently in the program, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve setting a public hearing for April 5th, 2022 to consider an ordinance to amend the real estate tax relief for certain elderly and disabled persons.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. Ms. Lassaclette, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the last one is an ordinance to amend the Goochlin County fee schedule. Every year, we ask our departments to take a look at their fees, to see if they're competitive or where they need to be. As you know, Public Utilities already has a fee schedule set out, and this is what's reflected here. It's also on page 18 to 23 of your packet, if you want to see each individual fee. It has them all listed out for you. And this is just, again, to advertise our, our change to the fee rate for Appendix C to-
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve setting a public hearing for April 5th, 2022 to consider an ordinance to amend the county fee schedule as presented.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will recess for our dinner break and see you back here at 6:00. Big hand on the 12. All right, we will recess for our dinner break and see you back here at six with a big hand on the twelve.
...
Calling back to order, our board supervisors meeting to talk this morning. It's been a lot of work for a lot of people, so we're happy to get to this place. And I now turn it over to our county attorney, Ms. McGee, to go over the changes for consideration for the redistricting maps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Biskayowicz. I'm Goochlin County Attorney Tara McGee, and I'm here this evening to present you the public comments and request for revisions to the county's proposed redistricting map. This is the redistricting team known to all of you. They have worked very hard and devoted a great deal of time to this effort. I'm very grateful for the effort and energy they've spent on this project. Let me provide you a context for our discussion. The quick reminder of the legal requirements for redistricting election districts. When we say substantially equal in population, the board will recall that's plus or minus 5% of your target population. Contiguous and compact, districts cannot be drawn primarily for the purpose of either concentrating or diluting minorities. And those clearly observable boundaries, the roads, streams, and rivers, are actually what were used by the Census Bureau when they created census blocks. Our redistricting has been the bundling of census blocks. And then as to considering the state election districts, there's only one state election district boundary that runs through Goochlin, and we have appropriately incorporated that into our map. The additional criteria that the redistricting team used are stated here. Excuse me. These were approved by the board. We moved the fewest number of voters that we could to minimize voter disruption. We retained the same basic shape of current districts. We kept residents who live in the same subdivision in the same district. When the redistricting team provided these criteria to you, it was our recommendation that we use the word subdivision rather than neighborhood, because subdivision is an objective criteria based on whether or not a subdivision plat was filed, and so we could use that objective criteria, and did. And then shown struck through at the bottom of this slide is the fourth criteria, the one that you directed staff not to use, so the team has given it no consideration, and that is of incumbency. Having followed these criteria, the team created this proposed map, and it's posted to the county's website about two months ago. You have seen this slide before. The target goal for each district was 4,830, and this shows the adjusted population and that each district in the proposed map is plus or minus 5%, as is legally required. For the public input and community feedback, the creation of the map was just the start of the process, and this has been the much more important part of it. The two goals of this process have been public input and transparency. We held seven community meetings in the month of January. We gave about a 35-minute presentation. It's similar to one that has been given to this board. We went through each precinct, each map, and the data that surrounds it. Residents could participate either virtually or in person, and these are some of the photos from our online, excuse me, from our in-person meetings. We had about 40 attendees at the community meetings, both in person and virtually. The meetings were videotaped, and they've been available on the website, and transcripts of the public comments and questions were made and placed on the website. In fact, this slide is full of all the information that's been available on the county's redistricting website. In the two months since the map was created, this website has gotten just about 1,400 views from county residents, though by far the most useful element of the redistricting website was the interactive mapping tool created by Devia George of our GIS office. It allowed residents to see what district they were in currently and what they would be in under the proposed redistricting map. And this also received almost 1,400 views in the past two months, an average of 30 views per day. But that's a summary of the information we provided out to residents. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the comments that residents made to us about redistricting. We received inquiries, as you might expect, about how a resident's precinct or district would change, or why a polling place was changed. There's some questions about the process, like what the adjusted population was or how it was created. We received some inquiries about how and when people would be notified about the changes to districts and precincts. And of course, the answer to that is by voter information notices that will be sent to all Goochlin voters before June 6th. We were asked to make sure that all available resources were used to notify residents, which we intend to do. In addition, one of our residents provided us a suggestion to improve the process by making sure that the former polling sites, we include a sign telling folks where to go to the current polling sites. It's a good idea, something that our electoral board has done in the past. Residents asked who would represent them between the time the map is adopted and until the next election, local election in 2023. The answer, of course, is that you will continue to represent your districts, as will the school board, as will county appointees to the planning commission or other district committees. A resident asked about the demographics of the county's election districts currently and under the proposed redistricting map. They remain remarkably similar. But the number-one comment, the most frequent topic that the public provided, was appreciation for the hard work that was done by the county on redistricting. People recognized the amount of time and effort that went into creating the map, and they expressed that appreciation to staff, to the county, to the board members. Even while not in writing, residents expressed appreciation for the board's decision not to politicize the process, for the wealth of information provided, and for the many ways that the citizens were allowed to engage. But the next portion is for me to discuss the requests that were submitted, asking for revisions to the proposed redistricting map. The redistricting team received three requests for changes, and they're presented in the order that they were received. One to revise a District 4 or 5 boundary, the second to add a third precinct in District 4, and the final one to revise the District 1 to 2 boundary. Based on our commitment to transparency, each of these requests was posted on the website when it was received, and we have recently pushed out information about these requests via a press release and some social media to try and increase the residents' awareness of these requests. And I'll now go through each one. The first request involved that change to the D-4, D-5 boundary. The request was actually that the homes in the Kenlock subdivision and around the Hermitage Country Club be included in the same district, either in District 4 or in District 5, because the requested believed that it should be considered a community. There was a commonality of interest. Let me start by orienting you first to that border as it exists in the proposed redistricting map. Kenlock is located in District 4. In fact, the redistricting team had to move a few census blocks because the former boundary split Kenlock. And of course, in order to keep subdivisions in the same district, as was according to the criteria you gave us, we moved Kenlock so it'd all be in the same district. So Kenlock is located roughly here, and the Hermitage Country Club is essentially right there under where the Precinct 4 or 2 label is. So with that orientation, let me go back to what the request was. It was to put them in the same district. Now, because we had published this request, actually at one of the community meetings, we had two residents express opposition to this requested change. And because we're not allowed to have voters in the same precinct vote for different representatives of the House of Delegates, we use that green line as our precinct boundary. That did result in Precinct 402 being the largest precinct in the county by far, and it has 3,134 registered voters, according to our data. I'll remind you that the legal requirement for precincts at the time you create them is anywhere from 100 to 5,000 registered voters, so it's a legal precinct. But under state law, when you have more than 4,000 registered voters vote in any presidential election in a precinct, you are then legally obligated to create a new precinct within six months. So that's one of the legal standards you should be aware of as you consider this request for a precinct. Our general registrar, Ryan Mulligan, who's part of the redistricting team and here this evening, told the rest of the team that the Gushland Electoral Board today considers adopting a new precinct whenever they have more than 3,000 registered voters in a precinct. So we actually are creating a precinct, which already is more than what they would typically ask for in any precinct, to the point where they would ask for a new one. Let me go back to the change that was requested, because the Electoral Board submitted a number of reasons in support of its request for the change. The large number of registered voters, that there is a good bit of significant growth anticipated in Precinct 402. They stated that adding a precinct increases the election costs, and the Electoral Board wanted to get the new precinct before the county so you could consider those costs of the additional precinct sooner rather than later, and I will go through the costs during the presentation. The quester also said that if a third precinct is created now, your voters will be notified in that June notification that's going out to every voter, and so you would save money in terms of sending that notice later. The Electoral Board believes that adding the precinct now will alleviate voter confusion and misdirection that could occur if you have the proposed redistricting map and then create a precinct shortly thereafter, making another change. And finally, the Electoral Board stated that this third precinct needs to be up and running in its opinion, not later than 2023. So we were able to create a proposed map that would allow you to make the change requested for Precinct 403. Pursuant to this map, Precinct 402 has been split, and you can see another three different colors. Precinct 402 would have 1,084 voters, registered voters, and its polling place remains St. Matthew's Church. And this new Precinct 403 in the lower right-hand side would have 2,050 registered voters. There is no suitable location in this proposed Precinct 403 for a polling place. And so actually, a part of the Electoral Board's request was to use Salem Baptist Church right here as the proposed polling place for this new precinct. Salem Baptist Church, while located in Precinct 401, is within one mile of the precinct boundary, and that's the legal requirement for the location of a precinct. So again, it is legal under state law to put it there. The team went through an evaluation of this change request and has the following comments for you to consider. There are already significant growth anticipated in Precinct 402. Includes already approved projects, includes over 2,000 additional residential units, and that's not including the pending applications that are going through the process now for Markell Eagle Developments out at the Henrico border or adding to Reader's Branch. Under the request, it does divide that future growth between 402 and the new proposed 403, with 402 retaining just over 1,600 new residential units that have been approved. Now, it built, but at least gone through approval. And proposed Precinct 403 having about 650 of those approved residential units. But there is no polling place in Precinct 403, and the lack of that is of concern to the team. While the Electoral Board believes that creating a Precinct 403 now alleviates voter confusion, the team felt that the voters will be confused by having to travel outside of their precinct to get to vote. And if you notice, it is very distant, especially for, oh, hang on, sorry. Way over here is part of Precinct, excuse me, way down here is part of 403, the apartments, there are 398 voters there, and they'll be going all the way up here to Salem Baptist Church. So that is a distant polling place for them. The other thing we think you should consider or would want to consider is that the West Creek Fire Station is planned to be constructed in Precinct 403, and it would be an appropriate future polling place. Construction should be, again, either next year or in the next several years, depending upon your action on your CIP. So you can add Precinct 403 in the future, and I want to let you know that adding a precinct actually can be done process-wise with just a public notice and a hearing before the board, like any other county ordinance change. It is not one of the actions that has to go through the slightly harder process under the Virginia Voting Rights Act. In fact, creating 403 now and then later moving the polling places is an action that requires additional, you know, publication of public notice and comments or AG approval. So that's just to give you some idea of the two differences in process. But then let's talk about the costs of the additional precinct. This includes the startup costs, because there would have to be an additional voting machine, scanners, laptops, and some equipment, and then annual costs for maintenance and licensing. And then that per-election cost, again, you could have anywhere from one election a year, the general election in November. You could also have a June primary, and in years for presidential elections, you are going to have a March primary. So when I totaled the cost for you there under the total annual and election, that's anywhere from one election per year up to three elections per year results in those costs. But with the general registrar on our redistricting team, we also want to let you know that there could be additional costs even if you do not create a third precinct today. And the reason for that is because the general registrar wanted to let you know that with a precinct of this size, he may need an additional polling machine just at the precinct, excuse me, Precinct 402, at that polling place. Based on changes in the election law dating back to 2020, there've been a lot of no-excuse absentee voters in the past two years that have voted not in person at their precincts on Election Day. But 57% in the general election of 2020 voted by mail or early voting, and in 2021, 32% voted absentee. The popularity and availability of absentee voting has significantly reduced the numbers of voters in precincts on Election Day, but if that changes, either through legislation at the General Assembly or just voter behavior, if more people then return to the precincts on Election Day, the general registrar would be asking you for an additional polling machine at Precinct 402. And so I just wanted to provide you that cost comparison, just so you understand, the top is if you were to add a third precinct today, those costs, but the cost below would be to add a polling place if needed, an additional, excuse me, polling machine in Precinct 402. I will note, though, if you were to incur the cost of that additional polling machine down below, you would be able to use that polling machine in the future at a Precinct 403, should you choose to create it. So that would decrease the upfront costs of a third precinct in the future. That is then a recap of change request number two, which there is a legally acceptable way to create, and that's why staff presented it to you, together with its evaluation. I am asking if the board will consider and vote on this at the end of the presentation, and I'll move through the one other request.
Do you have any questions?
Would you like to? Yes, ma'am, I'll take one.
As we do them so that we don't get the question myself?
Of course.
Okay. All right, so you did answer my question about the absentee votes, and I think because of the way we calculate the absentee voters in the CAP precinct, we don't know how many voters in 4 actually voted absentee or in person.
That's correct.
But I guess maybe we do know how many people actually showed up, right?
And you are wisely directing that question to our general registrar, Ryan Mulligan, who's here.
Well, probably all my questions are for you, if you don't mind.
Ryan, come on up.
Can I just get you to come up? Yeah. I mean, just nod your head, it's not going to get it. No.
Well, maybe for that one, because, yes, I know.
So do we know how many, and I know the boundaries have changed, so it's not exactly apples to apples, but how many voters voted in person in Precinct 4?
Oh, well.
I mean, District 4?
Yes. I don't have that number, in which election.
Just do the most recent.
I can get you those numbers. I don't have those with me at the moment.
I meant to look them up before I came in and forgot. All right, so I've got a question for you, but let me just stick with the, so if we, oh, that's actually a question for Ms. McGee as well.
I'm right here. You can go back and forth, Ryan, and I know how to share.
Oh, okay. Okay, so if we were to, is it kind of like we can designate 403 but not appropriate it now? I mean, in other words, approve it, saying, yes, at some point, we're going to need it, but not approve it till a later time? Or it does go into effect as soon as we approve it?
Ma'am, if you choose to, the question for you to vote on tonight is either to change the proposed redistricting map for 403 or not, because, I mean, the ordinance follows this, and it lays out the boundaries and so forth. So while the board could indicate through discussion what its intentions are, there isn't a way for us, I don't perceive a way for you to legally say, we're not going to do this today, but we promise to do it in the future.
Okay. I was just kind of like appropriating it in the next, all right, so the boundary Salem Church, you said is one mile from the boundary.
It's within a mile.
Within a mile, okay, within a mile of that one boundary, but it's got nothing to do with, like you said, its fall. So that's the only criteria. It has to be one mile from the closest boundary.
So it has to be in the precinct or within a mile of the precinct? Like, it cannot be within the precinct itself, but if it isn't, it has to be within one mile. So we found a space on the boundary that it was within a mile of it.
And there are other criteria for polling places, but not that really come into play, you know, that place that's open to the public, government buildings are preferred, but probably those things are not criteria you need to consider for this situation. The team certainly did spend a long time trying to come up with any place in this proposed 403 to be a polling place, and they just didn't come up with anything in existence that would work.
So we don't know how many actual voters voted in person in the precinct?
I mean, I could look that up fairly quickly.
I mean, because if it's 1,000, then why are we setting, see, it plays into the decision.
Right.
Ms. Laskett, I looked it up on District 4, Shallowell, and Centerville combined, 2,161 people voted.
And that's November 21?
Yeah, November 21 election.
So total of 2,000?
2,161, yeah.
Well, that doesn't seem to indicate we need another precinct.
You said that was between 401 and 402?
401 and 402, yes.
Okay. Because, yeah, that would be even less, because we're only, we're only...
And those would be split between two?
Right.
Okay. I mean, I want to, I want to give you guys what you need, right? I mean, if we need a polling place, we need a polling place, right? I'm just trying to decide if it makes sense to do it, that's all.
Understood.
Right. Okay. And I think my other questions, so we said that we were going to notify all voters once this is set, whatever we do, notify all voters, even those who do not change?
So because of the state changing their lines, we're, all of Gushland County is going from the 7th Congressional to the 5th Congressional, so everybody needs to get a voter.
Okay, so everybody will be notified, precinct, polling location?
Districts.
What districts they're in. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah. And I don't understand, we're saying that if we send a notice to the District 4 voters now, it could be confusing if we don't do it till, so we could approve it but not set it up until 2023?
I think what that was talking about was it would be confusing.
That was on the slide, so that doesn't, that doesn't count.
That was on the slide, I think, of the Electoral Board request.
Ah, gotcha.
They put it in their reasons?
There was their request, right.
So I put it up for you.
Okay, I see, okay. Just make sure. All right, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any additional questions on Mr. Sharp?
I just think it's confusing to tell people you're going to vote at Salem Baptist Church and that at some point in the future, change it. Having worked as an election official for eight or 10 years, once at Dover Baptist, when they added Blair Road, and then when they split St. Matthews and added the Chinese Baptist Church, people get these envelopes in the mail with their new cards, and somehow they magically never get opened. And being someone who had the ire of a lot of people that came in and said, well, you don't vote here anymore, you vote at Blair Road now, or you vote at the Chinese Baptist Church. It's frustrating for the poll workers or the election officials, because people get absolutely ugly and rank, even by the time they leave, you're happy for them. I mean, it just, it's incredible to me to set up a third location now and then change it in a year and a half when something magically becomes, if there's only 2,000, 2,100 people voting. To have two locations, and then in two or three years, because once Avery comes on, that's 1,800 voters that are coming in. So we're going to have to add more districts before the next, so I would say if there's only 2,100, it just makes, to me, makes sense, leave it the way it is and pick it up later when we can find something inside 403.
Mr. Sharp, Mr. Peterson, here.
If you could pull up the proposed redistricting map, I think it's slide five, maybe, something There we go. I didn't know we were supposed to ask questions as we went along. I was holding mine for the end. It's more of a comment than a question or anything. One of the goals was to make it look compact, and if you look at District 5, you see a kind of a tan incursion.
Yes.
Incursion, and then you see, left, a kind of tail of the distribution here on the, and this is more of a comment because that green line that extends out to the tail, under state law, we're not allowed to redistrict that tail and then create a split precinct because it's the state boundary. So we really can't bring that, can't really make it more compact by bringing the western portion in, which would then enable us, obviously, to take that incursion out, but we can't do that and still comply with state law. Is that a fair assessment?
That's correct. In fact, you know, over the years, I've heard that residents have said something about that up-down of that line, saying, oh, my goodness, that's clearly, you know, gerrymandering, and in fact, it's census block boundaries that we didn't pick. But yes, sir, because that is the State House of Delegates line, we are following it in order to make sure that all voters within a precinct vote for the same State House of Delegates candidate, which is required by law. I will say that tan incursion is because we, under the idea of keeping all subdivisions together, that keeps Kinlock together, because the prior boundary, which is actually this gray line here, shows you the prior boundary, it, as Kinlock has built out, it's split Kinlock subdivision into two districts.
The incursion used to be in 5. In order to keep all the Kinlock together, you'd need to address the western boundary and make it more compact and keep the communities together, but can, no can do because of state problems.
That's correct.
So it's, again, more of a comment than a, just in case citizens were following this either here or at home, saying, why don't you make that more compact? I don't think we can. Of course, you know, we weren't involved in this upfront, this is why I'm bringing it up now, but there's no way to address that and still comply with.
That's correct. There's not, we looked at, there's not insufficient registered voters in that region of the western part of District 5 to create a whole precinct and change the state, you know, and still around the State House of Delegates line.
Okay, right, great, thank you.
More questions on change request number two? If not, Ms. McGee? Oh, I'm sorry.
This occurred to me, please. All right, so if... All right, so if we choose not to form this third polling location in the fourth district, what did, you made a comment that, let's say, two years from now, or three years from now, we realize because of new residences coming in that we need to do it, did you make a comment that it would be harder? Easier. Okay, that's all I'm aware of. Thank you.
Let me tell you what you're going to say.
No, to be fair, the creation of a new polling location and creating a new precinct is an easier process than moving a polling place. So if you created Precinct 403 with Salem Baptist Church, and then when something else became available, you wanted to move it, there's slightly more process involved in that than waiting to create it, say, with a West Creek Fire Station, that's slightly less process.
Okay. Again, I didn't want to maybe make a decision today and then set us up for a problem down the road, if we could possibly avoid it. Thank you very much. Okeydoke.
Okay. Ms. McGee?
Mr. Sharp, did that, questions come from my time? Because I'm rolling.
Your pay time for my questions.
Thank you, sir. I didn't mean yours only, just all of them. Next, let me go through the third request that we received, which involves changing the boundary between District One and District Two. A resident requested that we revise the boundary between these two districts, and here's the reasons that were provided by the requister, that Cartersville Road is used in the lower part, and I'll show you where in a minute, as the District One and Two boundary, but the requister stated that the residents of this area of Cartersville Road are family members and that they attend the same churches and are a community. And so instead, the requister asks to use River Road West as the District One, District Two boundary, and he feels he said that would not split a community. And to achieve the appropriate population, the requister said, use Broad Street up above as part of the northern District One, District Two boundary. And I'm going to show you this on a map. In fact, the requister actually sent the team a map showing the boundary line change that he was requesting. Before I show you his change, let me start off by showing you as it is proposed today. And as I mentioned just a minute ago, there's a gray line through this that actually shows today's election district boundary, okay? And so what you need to know about the proposed redistricting map is we made very few changes to the existing boundary between District One and District Two. Up here in the Carter's Plains Road area, Cedar Plains, excuse me, we made a couple of changes because there were three subdivisions that were being split between the two districts, Meredith Farms, Bowling Play and Place, and Red Eye Subdivision. And then to create the right distribution of population, this district, this census block, excuse me, was moved from District Two to District One. The Cartersville Road area that the requister's talking about is right here. This is where Cartersville Road is the boundary between District One and District Two. So now let me go back again to the requested revision. This map shows the proposed change to boundary, to the, excuse me, for the District One, District Two boundary, with, as noted, River Road forming the district boundary down here instead of Cartersville Road. And then in order to reach the right population up here, there's, north of Broad Street has been switched. This proposed map does create a legally approvable plan where District One has 4,943 adjusted population, and that's a deviation of plus 2.34% from our target. And District Two has 5,021 adjusted population, a deviation of plus 3.95%. So both districts would be created within the legal standard of plus or minus 5%. We next have for you a comparison of the requister's map and the proposed redistricting map. And down here in the lower left, that hatched area, is where District One voters would be moved into District Two. The middle area here, right around Cedar Plains Road, is where District Two residents would be moved into District One. And similarly, all the way up here, that's where District Two residents would be moved into District One, as compared to the proposed redistricting map. And then, if, there's a lot on this map, but you can remember just a minute ago, that gray line is the current boundary, and one of the few places it changes is still at Cedar Plains Road. The team created an evaluation of this request for you. This was not a request received by a Cartersville Road resident. We didn't receive a concern or a request from someone who lived in that area. This request does change the shapes of both District One and District Two in contravention of the approved criteria to retain districts' basic shapes. And then this request also moves more voters than the proposed redistricting map does, which goes against the goal we had of minimizing voter disruption as one of those approved criteria. I researched the electronic files in the county attorney's office and found that that section of Cartersville Road has been the boundary between District One and District Two since at least the maps that were adopted after the 2000 census. That's as far back as our electronic records go. So I was able to determine that that was the boundary after the 2000 census, as well as after the 2010 census. One concern that's raised by the proposal is that the voters that live way out here, excuse me, near Fluvana County, have quite a ways to travel to their polling place. And in fact, they drive sort of essentially right by the Byrd Elementary School, which would be their polling place if they remain in District One, as is proposed in the proposed redistricting map. So that's the final piece that we evaluated for you about this request. And again, I'll take any questions about that map proposal for you, and I'll ask you to vote on it just at the end of the presentation. Any questions?
Mr. Sharp?
What is the definition of community?
Well, state law has something called communities of interest, and it's defined as places, and I'm not going to remember all the criteria, but that have a commonality. And, you know, in almost every redistricting, I've had that definition, but I haven't, I don't believe it's here in front of me today. It's called a community of interest, it has a commonality in, it's not beliefs, I'm not going to remember exactly. And when the redistricting team presented to you, we made a point of saying, we have a difficult time being able to figure out who is, say, a neighborhood or a community. We don't live out there. That's why we asked to use the objective criteria of subdivisions, because subdivision plaits are recorded, in fact, they're shown on our maps. So we asked for that objective criteria to use.
But it does make it a longer drive, which means it's not voter-friendly when we're trying to get, make it easier for people to vote.
Yes, the general registrar pointed out to us that one of the things he hears the most complaints about from voters is if they have to drive by one voting place that's closer to them in order to get to where they have to vote. I think it's fair to say that that's one of the most frequent complaints that Ryan hears, he told us, if that occurs.
I just, I find it interesting that somebody who doesn't live in that area is trying to change a district for which doesn't have anything to do with them, it just looks funny to me.
You, Mr. Sharp, Ms. Laskolet?
She answered my question, thank you.
Okay.
I like to answer them before they're even asked.
Any other questions for Ms. McGee?
The rest of my presentation is brief. There's a little bit of redistricting process left, so let me go through that. If the Board were to vote tonight to make either of the changes to the proposed redistricting map, we would be posting revised redistricting map as soon as we possibly can, because it has to be available for public comment for 15 days, and that's to comply with the Virginia Voting Rights Act. We are at the very end of today, asking you to set a public hearing for March 15th at 6:00 PM for the final redistricting map and ordinance to be adopted. The map and ordinance become effective 30 days after adoption, and the general registrar has said that he would send out voting information notices to all county residents, because everybody's had a change, not later than June 6th. And this is for any other questions? Because I wasn't sure the questions were coming earlier, but the only last three slides I have direct you through motions to vote on, so I don't know if there's anything else you'd like.
Mr. Peterson?
Just the very last thing, is that this becomes effective?
30 days after adoption.
Which would be?
April 15th, tax day.
And then notices are going out in, how does that affect the spring primaries? Not at all?
Let me allow the general registrar to answer that question. Ryan?
Not meant to be a trick question, just curious.
So we're not sure if we'll have a June primary this year, probably not. So the June 6th is definitely, at least by June 6th, if we do have a primary, hopefully I'd be able to get them out before people start voting.
Yeah, I mean, that was, my question was, make sure we get these notices out in time for people to do whatever they need to do. And if they don't need to do anything this spring, that's one thing. If they do need to, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I have to really ramp up operations to get them out by May 6th, I think, is when absentee voting starts, if we do have a primary, but it's possible.
So we're not waiting from April 15th to June 1st if they have to do something in May, that's all.
Right.
To be fair, I don't, I know that Ryan won't be waiting, I'm just not sure when the electoral board will allow him access to input information. They may allow it when you approve it March 15th, and I don't know if they would make him wait till the April 15th date. That's just not, that's out of Ryan's hands.
Okay, fair, to be fair, you did say no later then, so as opposed to no earlier then, so I, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, we do not have citizen comment period on this, but we, this whole process is a bit about transparency and getting feedback, so if there, I think, only right, we do have some folks that have come to visit us tonight, so if people did have some comments they'd like to make, I'd love to hear. Okay. All right. All right, Board, thoughts, discussions, motions? What's your pleasure?
As I suggested earlier, I believe there are three motions for the Board to make, and so I've laid them out on slides. I think they're also available to you in your prep sheet from the packet that was created. Please don't defer. Legally, you are entitled to, but you've heard the timing, so...
So just to be sure, I'm sure you all know this, but just, a motion to approve would be approving the requested change. A motion to deny would be staying to the original.
That's correct. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Chairman. I have no doubt that's helpful for your colleagues.
It's helpful for me.
I'll go ahead and start, and I'll make a motion after a brief comment. So Change Request One is not on the list of motions because our team couldn't find a way to get it to fit.
It's not legal.
So that's off the table. Request Number Two, District Three and District Four, based on what I've heard from Ms. Laskolet and Mr. Sharp, and my sense was, if I had hoped that we were, our state legislatures would move us away from election season and back towards Election Day, that would maybe consider this more of a concern. But we saw the numbers of early voting, so I don't see it as that pressing, that, that's part of the reason I don't see it as that pressing. But then I'd also, I'm repeating what Mr. Sharp said, I think we have, if we can only fit in Salem Church and 401 and 403s down here, there's a lot of travel. My preference is, but I'm, this is...
Is that a motion?
It's a long motion.
Well, I'm, no, it's some comment, because I don't want to get ahead of myself, because if people, I'd, we'd love to hear, we'd love to hear if people think that this is better, but I don't think the third precinct, I'm not seeing it, but I welcome...
Make a motion to get it on the table, and we have discussion.
And then for the third request, I appreciate the effort that went into what the applicant did. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate the focus, that's the engagement level we're looking for. I appreciate it, but I don't, I don't see, that distorts, and Ms. McGee said, that when I look at it, it takes us away from the shape, the idea we were trying to keep the shape, that really distorts it and goes all the way out to Fluvana Line for that bottom portion, and has people driving right by this. So I don't think that works. So I move, I move that the Board deny revising the proposed redistricting map to include Precinct 403, and I move that the Board deny...
One at a time.
There are three separate motions.
Okay. All right, there's my motion.
Second.
All right, so the motion on the table has been moved to deny revising the proposed redistricting map to include Precinct 403 as presented. Discussion?
You don't want me to repeat myself, do you?
No discussion?
I don't think I could, even if I had to.
I'm not hearing any discussions, so I'm getting ready to call for a roll call vote. I'm calling for a roll call vote.
Let me do it.
Ms. Laskolet?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Chair Spoonhour?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors deny the revision to the proposed redistricting map from District One, District Two boundary as it was presented to us.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. Mr. Sharp, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Laskolet?
Yes.
Chairman Spoonhour?
Yes.
All right, Chairman, I move that the Board approves setting a public hearing for March 15th, 2022, at 6:00 PM to consider adopting the proposed redistricting map and ordinance as it has presented, sans the proposals that we just struck down.
Ooh.
Sans.
I use that, I use that font.
Second.
Motion, second. Roll call vote.
Roll call, okay. Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Laskolet?
Yes.
Chairman Spoonhour?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Board members. I appreciate your efforts tonight.
Thanks to his team, they did a great work. Yes, this was great. Thanks for those that came out tonight. We will adjourn the Board of Supervisors to our Tuesday, March 1st, 2:00 PM regular business meeting with 6:00 PM public hearings. All these meetings are open to public, we got lots of seats.